We'll start with. Start with the income statement. See if anybody has any questions. If you picked up. If you look up, Paul, when you printed them out, did you print them out today, just recently? This joint I changed.
Yeah.
This after this morning when I talked to her.
It was revised. I forgot what you revised.
Yeah, I fixed it, Carolyn.
Yes, I got it. I got the new one.
Okay.
I ran them over to you.
Sorry. It was really, it's not a big, it's just a change of the. Forty-six thousand, forty dollars that was in the New York State.
Oh, man.
Got moved to Capital project. So it's not, it's not a big change at all. So the question, one of the things that kind of popped out to me was the. Per month budget for the tax levy again, that was because we got paid last month instead of this month. Which we got paid a little early, which is good, right?
Um, yeah, we have been getting. The money early.
Yes, no, we're still, but your team, we're still have more money than what we have. Just like, yeah, that's great. The other thing that kind of stood out in my mind was the, under the expenses were, were the salaries, which were this month higher than budgeted, but that is because it was a three pay period. So that was, I was thinking, I know we've been understaffed, so why would we be paying, why would we be? But it's because, because of that.
There was one expense, I have a question.
There were actually fifteen thousand.
Hundred. Right.
Nine fifty-three, under.
Right, but we were twenty-seven last month.
Oh, okay, okay.
So I don't, kind of notice the difference, but I, but Joy explained that.
Well, I think. It's a three pay period. It was a three pay period month.
Right, this, this past month.
So, yeah.
You get six hundred dollars, that YPS support, that's six hundred dollars that we received from Stewart's, which is very nice of them.
Yes, we do.
Up one hundred dollars from normal, so they give us an extra hundred in there. And those were the ones that really kind of stood up in my mind, but if you have questions, please.
Before, before expense page.
Okay.
The hot spot.
Yeah.
How often do you pay them? Is that a, is that a quarterly or something?
It's a yearly, geez.
That's yearly, okay.
Isn't that right, Joy? It's yearly, right, on the hot spot?
Yes, it's a yearly renewal.
So, and we have different sets of them, so it's, you'll see it renewed at different times. You know what I mean? So we have like, we bought twenty, and then another twenty, you know, six months later. So they don't all come due with the same time.
Was there, was there an advantage to that?
What's that?
Was there an advantage to doing it that way? Was there an advantage to breaking it up versus putting one in?
I think, um, yeah, yes, we were limited to, through TechSoup, they would only allow you to do, um, I believe, eleven at a time. And so, um, then we started buying them direct to get a discount. And then we started purchasing them directly, some of them we purchased directly from Mobile Beacon, but you are limited to a certain amount per year.
Okay. Anything else on the? Income statement, anybody have a question on? Gas and electric's a lot higher, but with the time of year, you would expect that, right? Oh, Jerry, hi.
That may work out with a. Gas prices have gone up and they will be going up. And I have no idea how to budget that for next year.
That's for you, that's the. Anything else? Newspaper.
There is.
Well, under periodicals, is that newspapers and magazines?
Yeah.
Do, do magazines go out much? I'm just thinking for next year. I mean, she.
We have cut them back a lot.
Have you?
Oh, yeah, no, they, they're half what they used to be. Because we also, you know, have the digital magazines that people can, can use, and some of our regular patrons who used to check them out even, have not checked them out, but they can.
Right, so with that expense, where does that show up in here? Is it under magazines or is it under ebooks or is it?
Where, what, what are you doing? Hold on.
Under library materials, where would the online magazines expense show up?
That would be with UHLS.
Oh, okay.
You know, because it's.
In the, you mean the digital one?
Yeah.
Oh, oh. Yeah, I thought you were looking at that.
Well, no, I was looking at that so far we said.
No, it doesn't show.
Fair amount of money out there.
It's on bill from UHL. You know, like the Hoopla Bill or.
Right.
Which is in there as well, in the bill.
Yes. Anybody else? Let's go on to the bills, might as well go right into the bills then.
Right into the bills.
The first question I had had was this Able card, so that's worth three thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-one cents. But that, the last time we ordered those was twenty eighteen, so that's, that's, that's a, that's expensive.
We got a few years out of our batches, yeah.
Which is a good thing to know, right?
Usually, uh, we get a better price, um, if you're ordering a lot more, so.
Right. We change design this time?
No. We still, we, we don't have a changing the design, we're not changing the design, this is our logo, this is our.
We've changed it from just the white with blue to the white with blue with white, and then we did the joy version.
No, we do that.
So that's what I meant, we changed it?
Oh, no.
Okay.
I don't think so.
We didn't change anything this year.
Hey, don't be doing, yeah.
Yeah, everything's still the same.
I didn't open the box, so.
And then the CDTA bill is for two months. That's.
Let me look. Yeah. I guess.
Yes, it's for two months, it was, I checked it early. The printing, again, for postcards, that's like two years' worth of postcards, those are the postcards that we send out for, you know, if you don't have any mail or if you want to send it, then you. And then the ladder rental I asked about, but that, that had to do with the asbestos testing.
Which one?
The Roush Brothers, the ladder rental.
Yeah, um, we had to, we had to test the plaster around the project for asbestos, so the testing team come in and look up and say, we can't get that. They don't have that kind of equipment.
Right.
So we had to call Roush Brothers for a twenty-eight foot ladder to get up there.
They install the ceilings?
With that.
Sounds twenty-eight feet tall?
Yeah, at least, at least it takes a ladder.
To get up to the way the hall, all right?
But, um, which brings to mind this asbestos issue.
Right. You want to discuss that now or when Chris wins here?
Yeah, I can, I can wait for that.
Right, they force us.
Yeah.
We'll just have the insistence. Of what we're reading. So those were my only questions about the bills, I don't know if somebody else had other questions?
Couple hours.
I mean, is it a ladder or was it scaffolding?
Well, yeah, and the guys.
Okay. Well, if you ever need a twenty-two foot. I have one.
Heck, I got one of those. Yeah, that's tough to get, because you got a fleet. I've had scaffolding when they paint it.
So it's more than just the ladder rental, the ladder and the bike.
Yeah.
Right, so it's more than just that. What this Roush Brothers, if it does. Roush Brothers looked at the, the asbestos?
Well, no, actually Alpine does the testing. But they have to, guys, to get the ladder here and.
We charge the ladder, right, people on the ladder. Right, so I thought you asked whether it was for both, yeah, both pieces, so.
No, Alpine goes.
I'm not getting to it yet, so. So it was six hundred and twenty-two dollars for. For the, that seems like a lot of money.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm supporting.
Right.
And I'm assuming they stayed with the ladder and childrens. I'm sure, I'm sure they had somebody here with the ladder, somebody hundred, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, but I mean, I didn't have a lot of choices, really, at this.
It's not a science experiment. I don't want you to buy the ladder for price, but then which, which of you is going to bow here and put it up?
Right. You have to have connections to the fire department or something. There's a kitten up there, there's a kitten.
Yeah, I don't know if you've ever dealt with a twenty-eight foot ladder, but, um, okay.
So, uh, Stan's, which library was the repair of the?
Stanford's probably, I see here, I think, let me get where the stands are.
It's here, I believe it's the, I believe it put it on the, the radiator repair or something.
Right, but it doesn't say which library, so.
It would be here.
Yeah. The, um, most of the, they repaired most of the radiators in the stacks. There's a lot of them. Within the waste system.
That's right. I hope you have the power to make that happen, Paul.
Yeah.
Well, for lack of trying, I'm a person.
Yeah, that's right.
And then we have our account reconciliations for the three accounts, we have the operating, investment, and the payroll.
Yeah.
And you can see we made a transfer out of the investment into our operating, which is part of the money that was sitting in there from the payment, from the city.
Yeah, we had to, as you know, we had to put everything into investments because, so Joy keeps track of the separate account in this report. The separate one.
They're called bookkeeping accounts versus.
Yeah.
So, the money we had left over from last year's budget, where is that in here? You said it was about fifty thousand dollars.
It's not separate, you know? You have to sit and do all the calculations, and I did, and that's what I came up with, but it doesn't say. You, you just have to calculate it.
Well, it should be cashed, whatever, so it should be somewhere.
It's in the investment account.
Any particular bookkeeping account?
No. I don't really. System do that, I'm not even sure how to do that, so. Because, you know, we don't. Asbestos and income note stuff at the end of the year, no, like. Plus the way things come in and out, they don't necessarily correlate exactly with the end of the year. So you have to kind of do the calculation based on what you think you've had left over. And what applies to bills, you know, that you incurred the year before. So that doesn't count, because you still have to pay them, you know, what you're paying in January.
Um, and, but we operate on a cash basis, right, so.
What's that?
The accounting is done on a cash basis rather than a accrual basis, so, so the bills from December that get paid in January would be reflected in, in, for instance, twenty twenty-two, rather than.
Yeah, not only that, but the income in January that we get, the tax revenue is from December.
Right, but again, you know, since we have, operate on a cash basis, that would be seen as income coming in in twenty twenty-two. Okay, so it's just, it should be somewhere in here, I would assume it's probably in, in operating account.
Any leftovers or it's just in that operating account, any transactions that happen is right on that report?
But you have to remember that, um, the operating account, this one, um, what's the number, twelve, whatever? Is, what you see in this report is it's kept, it's supposed to be kept below twenty-five thousand. Everything else goes into the investment.
Right, but I, I was just being very generic, I, uh, it would probably be in the operating reserve.
Yeah.
And the investment, yeah. Well, just because it would have gone in there originally and just not be singled out.
Right.
Stuff.
I'm sorry, what? Yeah, there's a, we got a, a big quest for a hundred ninety-six.
Right.
Ninety-six, and then we also got a, a gift of ten thousand specifically for the different windows. So we had to have a bookkeeping way to keep that separate. And that's what it is.
I didn't know we sold ninety-four.
Yeah, no, that's basically a bookkeeping way that we can show, okay, that's one thousand for the window.
And we have to find the other forty thousand supply, so we can do the crucial repairs.
I don't know, I don't know what the cost would be now, and then they literally have to take that piece by piece apart.
I, uh, I've heard that there's a new stained glass place opening up in the yard. Probably from the same person, Jerry.
This was the place in Massachusetts, the one that we had.
Rather than Chapman? Chapman, Chapman is Albany.
No, this one is different.
My understanding is Chapman, Chapman is the stained glass place in Albany, that does repairs. And I believe that's who's doing the stained glass up at the sanctuary.
Anyway, we talked about that like, many years ago? The prices are.
I'm talking about what was included in the HSR.
Oh, okay.
For the skylights that are, are critical. So that was forty to fifty thousand estimate. Can this money here?
Yeah, I think, I think.
Are they considered Tiffany Rose, because they're always four under.
That may be.
Those skylights, yes. I, I mean, it was a person, yeah. It, it was intended to go toward.
Well, here, here's the thing, on Thursday at eleven-thirty, Channel thirteen's probably here, talking about Tiffany windows.
Oh, wow. Would anybody?
Lydia Koby, she called.
What sparked their interest, do you know?
What's that?
What sparked their interest?
I don't know, it's, it's a TV station, yeah.
Can we have any of the, the stained glass products here with us?
They're coming here from Oakwood, they're going to do, they're going to be in Oakwood, and they'll come here, and I don't know where else, they're going to come, try to do all the Tiffany windows. But it's going to be a little segment on Tiffany windows. And I'd like to get a chance to talk about Tiffany windows.
And how we need money for that.
And say, we have an anonymous donation, you know, to, to start us off, but we're still looking for enough funds to.
I think, I think that's a splendid idea.
Yeah, we'll see what happens.
I, what are you going to lose? Right.
Yeah.
Right. Looks like we brought in about another hundred, five hundred and fifty dollars for the fundraiser, so I think that's kind of feeding into the end. But it was a good year.
Yeah, that, the fundraiser.
Four to twenty-one thousand, ten dollars and sixty-five.
Which is not all that, considering, you know.
I know that's in the newspaper, that incredible, um, obituary, that, um, Loua Flowers.
Yeah, that's, that's, Joy, I don't, um, the donations from, um, like, um.
A memorial.
Esposito.
Esposito.
Yep.
Are those, a lot of the?
Yes, there's a lot of memorials for Mike, I think it was around three thousand.
Memorials.
Yes.
And then we had somebody that passed and we're getting some checks, her name is Nancy Matthews, and a Jacqueline Crable.
Yeah.
So we're getting various checks coming from those people.
Is there anything else we did not cover that? Or a question? We didn't cover the credit card? Oh, sorry, I, I don't have any questions on it. Yeah, that was the one that, uh, he had a question about the hot spots.
Yeah.
That was on there.
That was out, it's by Bill.
That's why it's. I saw it, it was, that is that high.
Mobile Beacon's like. Or.
Now, as far as budgeting, well, and are we going to have to have a discussion, or the finance committee is going to need to work on the budget, or how will we, how do we go from here? Just trying to figure out what I'm supposed to, I'm supposed to be doing something.
Well, um, it's possible, and you know, it's possible, um, when it comes to the budget for twenty twenty-three, there's two elephants in the room.
No money.
And once we deal with those one way or the other, the rest of the budget, well, you know, those elements are seventy percent of the budget.
Right.
Once we deal with that, um, you know, yeah, there's still, there's still other things to discuss, and I'll cover that too in a.
Okay.
But, um, yeah, it's possible to find it.
So too, I just.
That's all.
That's it, do we need to call the meeting?
Oh. I wanted to say the auditors have been in and working on the audit, and they said they'll be prepared to have the report by the next board meeting.
Perfect, that could depend on whether we return our letters.
Right.
Have people gotten their letters? I said my back, oh, wow, that's quick. I have questions.
They'll bug you for it, if they didn't get it.
And if, if there's any, um, from past experience, even if you don't get the letters, they'll still do the report. They'll just see that. Until they get more. Any close? Well, it's nice that it's the current.
Yeah. It was funny, it was a published thing in the Times Union about the best companies to work for, and they listed.
Oh, wow. Good to know.
That was it.
Thank you, Joy. Okay, so, yes.
Motion closed.
Hmm, okay. Oh, yeah, are we, okay, I didn't know whether you had a question that was in the finance committee. Oh, no, no, it's going to stay back to what you asked for, if you want to. I know, we're observing, you can do that. Can I make a motion? Yes, you may. Make a motion to close the, uh, our committee meeting. I think it's your key, will you be your second? Thank you. And I get more. All in favor? Anybody opposed? You're stuck here, I can't. But Paul, do you know whether any of the experts in stained glass are coming with, with you?
I don't think so, but that'll be interesting.
Really, like Tom Carroll or? Hi. It's going to be stained, the, uh, use then on a stained glass. Right. Here, and they're going to go up to Oakwood, and maybe just talk me about that.
I'm assuming it'll be normal about that.
Yes. Who, uh, who, who's, who's doing the statement? I guess you guys were the, Koby and.
Lydia Koby.
Oh, okay. Channel ten.
Well, whatever, channel.
Yeah, she's there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, she will.
But she's well known.
Well, I would.
So.
Do you know it's going to air?
Like that, it hasn't been recorded yet.
Yeah, um, yeah, it's a busy.
I don't know if they know. But.
May's Week.
I will second.
We could all watch, maybe during for May's Week.
Alyssa, I really kind of still. I'm not going to. I think it is. Oh, yeah.
I was kind of at the dark tour, I know that the library usually does something, it can jump to the back, and the person that usually does the arrangement is no longer here, they're in that capacity. No, you're, you're still in a different role.
This is.
Oh, yeah, because it's coming up, right? Yeah.
I don't do.
Because usually Nina Harrison is no longer with us. Okay, the price was raised and the timing has changed a little.
Actually had to have something roll in out there.
Yeah. You never know.
They, they, when the fence was here, there's a great, a patch of mahogany, lovely. Now there are a couple that are coming up through the cracks, and they're, I don't know, that's something, somebody planted the garden in the back, this or?
Well, there was, who was it? Who was the woman who did the garden back there, used to, was it McCarter? Very bad, McCarter, or something, she, there was somebody who.
Yeah.
Did a lot, and then.
Yeah, they.
It was part of the friends.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're still trying to come up, I see some tools and some other.
Right. Exciting kind of year. It is. It is an exciting kind of new day, it's five thirty, and we should get started, okay?
Thank you.
So, um, any public comment? I'm looking, is anyone out virtually for public comment?
I'm sorry.
You might want to sit here, so we can see what you're saying, if you're going to do the whole report. I think everyone. And I think that will be better of the. Thank you. Um. Um. Okay. It has. It's here. This is why you're great. And you're on. It's treasure for time. Yes, please. So, um, everything seems to be going well. We are a bit ahead of target as far as, uh, our net income at this point. But things, things are good. Uh, the bills this month are in the amount of sixty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars and ninety cents. And on the recommendation of the finance committee, I believe that we paid the bills in that amount. Are we just gonna assume that Brianna will take minutes?
We, we should, I'm, I'm taking a little bit of notes now, but does anyone want to take notes or minutes to this? Because you're not sure if Brianna's going to be here or not.
I'll take some, maybe buying, we can, okay, I'll do my best.
All right, and then we'll have your recording. That's what I did with other meetings.
Yeah, I know, I, I just sometimes sound isn't very good.
Yeah.
Especially, especially since we're, they have a fast way. So, uh, would anybody like to second that motion?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Anybody opposed? All right, motion cast to pay the bills in the amount of sixty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars and ninety cents. And actually, first, you're the only person with it. But if you had any questions, if you looked at the plans, you wanted us to go over.
If the committee recommends it.
Thank you. Back to that one. Um, so we're up to the consent agenda. So we have minutes, we have a building committee report. Admin committee report, we didn't have another meeting. Uh, there's, there's no upper Hudson, um, report. Any information got pulled into the president's report. There is a president's report in your packet and it's now online. It got in there late, so I don't know if everybody got to see it. It's ninety percent compilation of other things that went out in different ways. There. So, um, do we have any motion to accept this consent agenda? I saw you. Okay. Um, all in favor? All right. Any? Trying to take votes. Don't have a date, because we've all said yes, I don't think there are any exceptions for dates or it's just done. Um, up to the regular agenda, do you want to talk about our staff members?
I could again.
No, we wouldn't.
We have two new staff members in adult services. Um, we hired Chloe Whitaker as a library associate. Chloe is, uh, uh, finishing up her MLS degree. You owe me. And, uh, so she will in some way qualify as a library one. Um, and we hired, um, and, uh, Matusa Whit. Exactly. But it's, it's close here. Who, uh, joined our reference staff and she is replacing Larry Rogers, who was our part-time person. Um, she'll be working part-time. She's also, um, she works at the Connected County Community College Library. And she has quite a bit of experience, um, and, um, so those, those bring us up to full, um, number of people in adult services department. We've been short there for so long, I can't remember the last time it was completely filled. Um, but that's a kind of a relief, uh, for us. Uh, we also hired, uh, one library assistant, uh, Candace Moon in the circulation department. Candace is a graduate with Lantingburg High School and is currently a student at the State College.
What?
For new motion?
Yes, we do. I wanted to ask, what was, uh, Anne's level? Anne's.
Library.
Library.
Yeah.
One?
Yeah.
Okay, and Candace Moon's?
She's a library assistant.
Do you want to make a motion?
That we.
That we approve the hiring of Chloe Whitaker in. That is, I won't say, but I will in. Is that good to you?
Material.
Okay, so Keith's next motion. Uh, do I have a sentence? Give us a second.
What? Is it accept or is it acknowledge?
These are, for hires, we accept. We have to make a motion to actually accept. Because it's a fiduciary issue. Um, all in favor? Aye. Okay, so, well.
I think that's right. So Chloe is full-time, Anne is part-time, and. And.
I'm sorry, Mark, I'm sorry.
Anne is part-time.
Yes.
Yes.
For, okay, so you find. Um, and then we will acknowledge, uh, the departure of Larry Rogers. We don't need a motion, but, so we acknowledge that. Mr. Rogers is one. Okay. Thank you. Material selection policy.
Yes, we are supposed to review our policies, especially those which are older than five years. And this one goes back a long. Um, actually was written before my time.
Wow.
Um.
Didn't work like that to me.
So it is, I put it in the drop box. Um, it, it does borrow somewhat from the, um, the old policy. It borrows actually quite a bit from the old policy. But one thing that I took out, the old policy had, um, discussed each form separately. I didn't think that was necessary. In other words, you know, it discussed fiction and nonfiction and periodicals and, I don't know. But our selection policy is gonna be, you know, the same across the board regardless of what form, you know. So, um, as I said, that part was taken out and, um, we do endorse, um, the library bill of rights and the freedom to read statement, um, freedom to view statement, but rather than putting them into the policy, we're offering a URL, you know, to the AI site. That way, you kind of can keep up, they, they change something and then they, they, from time to time. That way, it's easier to keep up rather than changing that. material selection policy. And the last thing I, that was not in the drop box, um, version was a sentence I added later on, since our president had recommended it. It's a good statement, though. I just stole it from Upper Hudson's. Material selection policy. Um, and it just talks about the tools that we use in materials selection.
It's coincidentally, um, Upper Hudson just drafted its, its own material selection policy and kind of critiqued a couple of things out there. Rejected some things, accepted them, but there's one thing that when Paul and I were discussing this, that, um, he wanted to be brought in front of the board because there is another comment in the Upper Hudson piece that isn't quite focused and expanded as the one in ours. And that's how materials was drawn. Um, it's in, I did type it up in the president's report on the second page, but it read, withdrawn items and resources may be spoke in a variety of ways included, but not limited to public book sales, responsible and sustainable recycling, and for disposal. Uh, and the reason I had thought we might want to add it in is because of the sustainable, um, which is one of the new keywords in library, I'll say library world. Uh, many things are looked at in the view of how sustainable is it for a library? And it's the materials, but, you know, general aspects. So Paul thought maybe it might be something that we could make a decision on too, whether or not we feel that it should be included.
There's, what was the exact language on the, um, recycling? Uh, a, a reason I bring that up is paper recycling is sometimes a problem.
Because that, that's all they talk about, as sustainable.
Um.
But it also leads to that out of for disposal. I mean.
Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
It's another way you can.
Exactly. It doesn't limit you to say, no, have.
Oh, it says including but not limited to.
Right.
What I'm, what I'm getting at is we're having trouble right now with, uh, our recycling. Um, and, you know, recycling books. Even, uh, paper is questionable. It's not always, that always making enough money. But books is another problem because they have to be disassembled generally for recycling. Um, so all of a sudden, you can, you can get to a point where nobody's gonna pick this stuff up. Nobody's gonna recycle, you know, at least temporarily. And then all of a sudden, the pricing on paper, recycled paper goes up and then somebody comes back in. So, you know, it's up and down. That's what I'm saying, so.
So I'm very confused. Do we have whatever that people were referring to somewhere? It's in the, it's in the report. It's, oh, it's in the president's.
It's in the press report of the second page.
So, and that's exactly, I, I mean, I critiqued it, you know, copy paste in front of Upper Hudson's. It might be. I haven't usually forgot to entitle it, so it starts near, she finding this answer to the.
Here?
Yes, second page.
This is the last item in the packet.
Here, I'll tell you what, like, I'm not sure. Right.
Stable.
You should, you did. I know, very fond. I don't have that. My wife's. Think left it over here. Okay, I'll just look at it.
Okay, yes.
Both people, they don't have to find anything like this and like that. It's closer what is already in Paul's, it's just. Expanded a bit.
Last question.
Of course.
Um, materials means different thing in different. Here. Does this refer only to library resource materials? Or is this applied to cleaning products and paper and other sorts of materials as well?
They just say.
Now, this is, yeah, when we say.
It's collections.
Material selection, we're, we're, we're talking about that whole time you showed.
We're not talking again about.
Yeah.
This sort of stuff here or.
No, no.
Cleaning products.
No, no, not cleaning, but let's say it's DVDs. And you gotta get rid of.
All of this stuff.
Turn away in the church.
Exactly, anything that's.
And you can even include digital with it, but we don't actually.
Delete.
And just for libraries, when we talk about material, material selection, we need.
Be clear on.
Not necessarily computer equipment or chairs or tables or.
Well, not even computer.
Not even computer, but, or, not, and not as part of the material selection policy, no.
So even, even though like hotspots?
I, I would include those in the material.
Blending out.
So, I'm sorry, May.
No, I wanna hear what you said.
I, I am just, it's interesting, that line is, is hotspot is a digital device. A computer is not a digital device. Is it also a digital device? One gets spent out, one does not get lent out. One is office equipment and then is materially lent out, so.
I'm just. I, that's, that's, I'm just saying what the library world sort of, how they catalog or categorize these things. Uh, but generally, if we're talking about a material selection policy, we're talking about materials that are used by the public. And like I said, so, so, I mean, the hotspots, I guess I would classify them as part of this material selection because they're used by the public directly. Um, in other words, they're actually, you know, probably used to take up. But.
What about things that are in our historic collection? Where we, where the public book sale, you know, appropriate way to dispose of that. Says include but not limited to. If we wanted to auction something off, we would auction that. Or foul of, in that language.
First would have to be withdrawn. Yes.
That's right.
Yeah. What's it, what it said here.
Public book sales.
Um.
It's not. Right.
My library material is discarded when the subject matter is out of date, when demand is significantly decreased, or when the hero is critically worn out. Um, hmm. I guess we don't really say, but I mean, we don't get rid of literal history material.
So we, we just not.
Forever sell anything. Yeah, we don't.
We did so. I was gonna say, we say that, but we didn't.
Exactly.
Never say never. Stop walking before you try to clean. There's a collection, for example, upstairs in the art gallery that was removed from a circulating collection thirty years ago. Then it, much of it is probably fairly valuable. I think the board would have to approve that as a, as a sale. And it wouldn't be sold unless it's sold altogether.
So is that something that would fall within this description of material selection policy? That, on that, or is that a different sort of procurement or deaccession process? I'm just trying to, myself, educate myself.
Yeah, I mean, it would be deaccessioned if we sold it.
Yeah.
Um.
With this policy.
It's not specifically mentioned in, not.
But the cover of, um, but not limited to, including but not limited to, that. For your, you, yeah, if you, if you add that line.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess that's what.
Yeah.
And this policy does not.
Include.
Would not, but it would govern how that is handled. Is that correct?
I would say so. I, I, it's always, sorry. Well, I see, I understand your point. I, I don't think it is covered in this, really, what to do with things that are like that. Have value.
I think, right, we said that we, the policy of, obviously that circulate, but these are objects that do not circulate. Uh, so it's the way our computers don't circulate. So I'm just trying to understand.
Oh, yeah, that's lying. Yeah.
It's, it's not like appropriate questioning, but. Um, we also just had that situation where somebody donated books, the diamond books, to the library. And I guess they weren't recognized as being valuable until they got to the friends. And now the friends are, so. Well, they might be, you know, in, in that instance, they might be valuable to someone.
Right.
Were they valuable to the library to go into our collection? There's a possibility to that not.
They were never in the collection.
They go, they, they automatically goes to the friends to look at.
So unsettling.
But because they were never in the, in the collection, even though they were donated to the library, then this policy doesn't apply to them. Because they were never in. Yes. Yeah, could, yeah.
Yeah, I think something, but, you know, the value like that, I mean, book values or any antique values or whatever, some of the. It, it, and it's not actually part of our service. We don't, we're not vocal actors, we're not, you know, in that business.
But we do, yeah, because they're valuable.
Yeah, and that, that's why I think that we, we sure do treat them different. I like that they're, they're upstairs, they're not used, they're.
Black away.
Black away. Lacked away. I did call in a book dealer at one point years ago and we had a pricing on them and I don't think the board approved selling them.
Didn't you discover another book just recently? Was it Uncle Hans' cabin?
I, I don't.
I thought, I thought I remembered speaking of it, maybe.
There was one in the Troy room that was. Yeah, but, but that's not going to go anywhere. Yeah, almost anything in the Troy room. The only time anything like that has ever deaccessioned is when we have somebody duplicates. I mean. A lot of times, you know, people collect the local history stuff and so, you know, they donate it to the library, we wind up with, you know, eight, ten people. Or then we try to find another home for it. But basically, any of the local history that we have is, you know, not going to be deaccessioned for any reason. Other than, you know, those duplicates.
Interesting. So that goes back to the question of how do we feel about adding? That line to the policy.
See downside today. It's pretty open. It's not really limiting us. I haven't, I don't really know.
Drawing items and resources may be disposed of in a variety of ways, including but not limited to public book sales. Responsible and sustainable recycling in or disposing.
Now we'll go together to discard the paragraph there.
Pulled out of the collection. Anyone have anything about whether making the value?
What's your, what's your, you talked about how that, what's decided when it's discarded?
When the subject matter is out of date. And then above it is what we do with gifts. It says that if we don't add it, then we can basically get rid of it however we deem.
The poll is kind of saying, well, we would never do that, but there's no policy.
For what?
For selling things. Does that say it? I, I, not hearing that it says that anywhere.
I think you're right. The official says that if something is out of date, those valuable books stairs upstairs are out of date. When they've been significantly decreased or. When demand is sufficiently, significantly decreased, so I don't think there's actually that valuable material upstairs yet, so there's no demand for it. And when the material is physically worn out, I suspect they're under lock and key because they're very delicate and worn out. Or nearly, you know, so one could read that line and say, okay, well, now we can throw them away. I think what are you saying?
Yeah, should you add a line that says something about special collections have to be, you know, discarding special collections has to be approved by the board or something? What did you do? Just so that.
Because it doesn't seem to be addressed anywhere.
Right.
Or, you know, any item, well, any item over a hundred dollars, that's probably fairly low when you're talking about hotspots.
No, no, I don't think you. No, we don't really want pricing in here. They say we're not book collectors, we're not antique dealers. And book pricing is not especially.
Right, but do you feel that it would be prudent that if somebody was going to sell the collection out there, that it was approved by the board?
Yeah, I think you can say a special collection should be approved. I mean, you know, and that's the only special collection we actually have.
Right.
Yeah, but that's.
Does it say that? Does it say that?
No, no, but did you add that line in there, like we said, you kind of?
Since we have a line up. You wouldn't, but do we know your successor will have the same?
I mean, what we, what we, we're here as residents of the city of Troy who would be always interested in the history of Troy. There's no reason to ever get rid of the Troy collection.
I, I don't, it's really, I agree to a whole.
It, it, it goes against the very nature of what we are.
But this, this policy is being rewritten now. It hadn't been rewritten for thirty years before, forty years? It hasn't been rewritten?
Well, we also have the same collections that opened ago.
That's true, but were you on the staff at the time? Yeah, no. And it's likely that we may have another director at some point in the future. And this policy we're talking about today, they outlive our time. I think it wouldn't hurt to add something here that says that certain collections, just special collections, if we just say special collections.
Because that would cover anything that's kind of not on the regular shelves.
I don't know if there were any other things quite part of that. For instance, the artwork they have going.
If we did the artifacts, write another policy. Let's keep it focused just on the circulating materials.
And there's another thing we have, we should remember, is when those items were sold, this was an association library. Not a special district library. Once we became a special district library, the rules on selling things changed totally. Because the items and things that are here are considered part of a property. So if any, as a, to sell something, it would have to go through board approval. It's just like, I won't say given, I'm trying to find the right word, but the rules and the processes have changed now that we are a special district library.
And, and that's part of why with the definition of material that started at the beginning of our conversation. If we're talking about just circulating materials, then it wouldn't apply to things that don't circulate.
Right, yeah.
But if it just, if that is not clear, that it's only circulating materials, then I think we should clarify.
And I think materials that there have been things sold that haven't been board approved that are, you know, other than statues.
You, if you wanted to put the special collections in there, you're kind of have to define special collection. What collections are special, what are you talking about? Not only today, but maybe twenty years from now.
So if you say circulating materials, that is a policy, only applies to circulating materials that.
Well, the Congress reference materials that don't particularly circulate, the Congress.
Right. Yes.
The selection policy, yes.
If the discarding is part of the selection policy, then I'm. Or do you just do, do the selection policy, write a separate part policy as far as discarding? Circulating reference and write a separate policy for handling artifacts or etc.
I can understand an article, you know, separate thing for artifacts, even though now, again, we're kind of. The rules have changed, but we're, we're talking about materials and I think. Reference materials have to come under materials, period. I, I think too many policies, you get a little confused, but if there's a way of wording this, so.
So you also get confused when you got too many unlike, or too many branches.
Yeah, well.
Anybody who suffered through trying to figure out what they did as you're working at the, the documentation on software knows that. There's a point where you just stopped pads and branches and wrote something else.
And as far as the concern that it could be in place for thirty years, it does talk about review.
Yes.
So, I mean, it does imply that it can change over time.
If done right.
Should be reviewed now. And if done right, in five years, this gets reviewed again. That probably at least five years, if not sooner for whatever reason. This policy needs to be reviewed. And that's what we're trying to do here at the board is hopefully, maybe not be a monthly piece, but hopefully almost monthly. We'll review and open policy until we catch up.
So we have two questions on the table here. We have a question about, are we adding this line?
Yes.
And then we have a question about, are we going to address special collections?
Right. It, it seems like people are okay with adding that other line.
Right.
But now, you know, looking at the regulatory line, children, popular media. Those are in selection policy. I'm looking to see if there's anything else that. Might cover this.
This is like a nitpicky thing, but there is a type of one here. So this is going to be our official.
Oh, where?
Says, the executive, if the individual or group would come under reconsideration, which is to pursue their complaint further, they must contact the executive director in wiring. It says, it should be writing. Just, just if it's going to be public.
Yeah.
I would prefer not to have.
Where is it?
The second paragraph under reconsideration. At the word executive, is executive director in wiring.
You want me to circle it? This piece? With the thing that everyone was reading.
Oh.
Okay, so should we make a motion to include this one? About the ways to draw on items? Do we need to make a mention or is that just something?
You might want to put all the, you know, all motions under one headed because you need to approve the whole thing.
Right.
So you can prove the thing with these additions.
Okay, so we, what you want is something, is what we want to say about special collections.
Well, yeah, I think you, I think if you want to mention special collections, you want to put the. Or if you just want to talk about the Troy room collection, you could just talk about the Troy room.
Well, there's the upstairs collection and, you know, then let me get a mention about which ones. And so it'll say, oh, we did talk about the one from the last case. Our collection, collections of value to the public and to the TriPublic Library will not be.
What about if we said at the very beginning, circulating and reference materials, accepting special collections?
Right, you just made the, the note that this does not, this policy does not affect special collections. Again, you're going to have to, like, it would be cleaner and, and it would help move us along to deal with the original progress. And then address all the issues with special collections with its own policy number.
Well, and we can also say, you can also defer that to future generations and talk about what special collections are available for special. They're not special anymore, I guess. Yep, but we've been referring things to the library for a hundred and twenty years.
This is generally also used to kind of cover. Cover yourselves with the public. Why did you purchase that material? What is, why is that in the library?
Intellectual field.
And basically, that's to protect, you know, you folks and the librarians and that sort of thing. If you exempted something. You know, then you're not really covered. How did this book get in the Troy room collection? Why is this here?
What if that?
What if that?
Do we get a lot of questioning in that way? Why is this book in your skin?
We don't because we are in New York State, so I only have one complaint and thirty of you.
What if we, that description only applies to starting portion, starting of library materials? Circulating and referenced library materials is discarded when certified out of date. And special collections shall be reviewed on a case by case basis. Okay, I, I moved that, the following phrase to. Second, beginning of the second sentence of the starting paragraph. Circulating and reference. After that sentence. But at the very end of that paragraph. Special collection, the accession of special collection materials. Will be on a case by, will be reviewed. Maybe by him. That's a good question. Administration or whether it's by. Reviewed by, or just approved by the board.
Starting of, he would say circulating and reference material?
All the way to, at the very beginning of this sentence here, the second sentence.
So it'd be. In reference? Library material?
Why couldn't you put that sentence, the accession of special collections must be approved by the board and the discarded?
That's what, that's what I'm suggesting.
Oh, I thought you were going to put it at the end of this paragraph.
No.
Only, my recommendation, only for the discarded paragraph. We, we agree. It should be.
All right, and then so the last, so then we would add that extra line from upper Hudson, right? From material. Et cetera. And then the accession of special collections. Will be reviewed on a case by case basis.
And approved.
Reviewed and approved by the board. Reviewed and approved by the board, right, on a case by case basis.
Now, what about this first, this second paragraph? We say the selection of library materials, do you want to say the section of circulating and reference?
No, I, I think you made her, okay, okay, I think you do want to keep that general.
Okay.
It's just on the, the accession side of people, if you think it's worth getting, we should get it.
Okay.
So you were asking.
Then you could approve this selection policy with the change.
Correct, exactly. So I want to make sure we know what the changes are. So, because I think we're policy this time. So he's okay with this, right?
A continuation.
Okay, and then we have that. So we, we all kind of know what we're doing? I think so. Good. And what's this is changed? We see it so we know this is anything that's.
Right, we can always.
We can fix it. But hopefully we've done that right. So, um, how's this? I'll make a motion that we accept the material selection policy with the commented changes, additions, et cetera. All right, I think that's enough for a motion.
Right.
We have a second.
You do.
On favor? Okay, so no notes. So. Budget and budget day and the salary schedule.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
Okay, if I could find it. The, um. I, I drafted salary schedule for twenty twenty two. And the way that I drafted it was, uh, taking the information that we gathered. And thanks to Carolyn that we. Now, I combined that with the upper Hudson library, uh, salary, uh, survey of other libraries, you know, in our region. And also threw in, um. Salaries that I have seen, everything is, um, true data. So it's not. You know, completely every library, but it's libraries of similar size in similar situations with similar population level. And that, I use those averages in step one. Now, step one is starting back. So I use that and that's kind of critical for any kind of salary schedule that I draw. Because, um, we need obviously a starting salary. And what you have is, for example, at our level of library assistant. Which is basically library clerk and many librarians. We needed to push that definitely over fifteen dollars an hour. Because everybody now is over fifteen dollars an hour that I can see anywhere. Including Stewart's and McDonald's and everywhere else. So if you can't do fifteen, you've got a problem. And then if you take a look at something like library one, which is another kind of. Bellwether, so to speak, um. We went back to forty eight thousand nine fifty eight. Now, you'll see. Many, in cases, library one is now pretty close to fifty. It's almost all fifty to fifty two. And what I talk is, and what I use in compiling this is the hourly rates. So. You're going to be over fifty in libraries that are thirty seven and a half hours, rather than thirty five hours, which is what we are. But that's how, you know. We matched the hourly rates, uh, or using averages and that comes out to the forty eight nine fifty eight. And then the rest things kind of followed. Not everything that I looked at, um, is moved. At, at the same percentage in this starting pack. It's based on the averages that we see, you know, in other libraries in our competition, so to speak. So rest of the steps. In this case, or a matter of three percent across the board and you just. Like that formula there then generates three percent for the next fifteen steps.
So many steps.
What's that?
Why so many steps?
I don't know. That's what we had before. Um, we don't need them, um, necessarily. But sometimes people hang around for a long time.
Right, well, I was gonna say, sometimes you do, I mean.
Sometimes you do, yeah.
Yeah.
But the thing is, make you use the three steps you made, you made the paper grade. Now, you're making seven things in the paper grade. If you're there five years at paper grade, then there's all gender. And, and we do have to compare ourselves to what they would see if they had to work for other public entities other than. Community libraries or library stuff.
Yeah, it doesn't, doesn't have to be fifteen steps, it doesn't necessarily, um, like I said, that's kind of was before, but. Even a three percent is, you know, becoming questionable, whether that's even something that's going to keep people. I mean, you know, you're, you're trying to keep people, uh, pay a living wage here. Right now, we're running eight and a half percent across the living increase as of. You know, the end of March. Are we, and, and, and that's, you know, if you go back to the nineteen seventies and eighties and so on, that was kind of. Is that going to be common again? We don't know. But if it is, three percent isn't going to cut it. Salary schedule, how, how long does it last? I mean. You know, a couple of years.
At most, right?
Yeah.
It should.
Um, then you got to change your base pay again, you're, you're starting pay again. So, you know. Um, so I also calculated basically what this concludes. Using cross staff levels. What I calculated would be our, um, salary line would expire about a hundred and four thousand.
And when you say salary, it's different than salary or salarian then?
Just. This salary. Benefits. Are not impacted a great deal. I mean.
Don't some go up commensurate with both salaries, like social security and?
Yeah, that's, that would be.
Also, retirement could be.
That's, that's, yeah, that would change a bit. Um. But that's as, that's as far as I got, like I said, salary would cost, you know, a hundred and four thousand. Based on my figures. That hundred and four thousand, uh, checked with this city controller and that would be about eight percent tax.
Assuming that nothing else gets raised.
Why? Well, eight percent applies to every hundred thousand. Wasn't for that particular hundred and four thousand. It's, it's a figure he uses for the library tax for other home tax.
But it's eight percent of the current tax revenue. So it, um, it assumes that nothing else is increasing.
Well, we haven't done the rest of the budget.
Right, so that's, I mean.
That's what you're asking.
The, the total revenue increase to go up more if.
Well, this is supposed to be about, you know, not only just salary, but about the budget as well. And there are issues in the rest of the budget, yeah.
No, so, so this doesn't necessarily translate, just translate to the. What? The overall tax revenue has to be increased to address the others.
No, because I haven't done all that. But you've got some issues as well in the rest of the budget. Uh, we don't know, for example, right now, energy costs are going up. Natural gas prices are going up. We know that. We don't know how far they're going to go up, but we know we're going to go up. We faced a close to eleven percent increase in health insurance last year. It could be another eleven percent. The, the most difficult thing to budget is that natural gas cost. Because by the time we have to have a budget ready, we don't know what that budget is. The other thing, the other thing that's a problem for us is, um. Our incredibly major repair and maintenance project for two buildings that are over a hundred years old. It's like fourteen thousand.
More than twenty five, it's just.
Um, it's way too low. It's been too low. We know it's too low. And, and the other, uh, issue is our materials budget. Is too low for a library that serves fifty thousand people. We know that. We already talked about that at one point. So, yeah, there's other parts of the budget that right now are still kind of up in the air. But I, and I have a, you know, tackle of, yeah.
Now, as we're looking at this salary schedule, we're talking about implementing this now though, in twenty twenty two? Or are you talking this only for twenty twenty?
I mean. Yeah, I, I, it's critical at this point. You know, with, with high turnover that we're having, we're, we're having difficulty hiring people at all. With these salaries that we have. Uh, we're not competing.
Yeah.
And we need to compete and, and attract good people and, and, you know, qualified people and, and, you know, that's what makes. The service work. So, yeah, it's critical right now.
It could kind of better occur except by reducing. The budget lines of the other, in the other areas.
Or by, or by increasing taxes.
Well, but we can't, we can't do that if you're still, very much. So if we're going to do it now, something else has to.
Yeah, you can't. Yeah, I, I would be assuming it would have to be implemented in twenty twenty three.
Well, I think there are probably ways that, uh, ways that it could be reduced. You could close a branch. What is, what is, uh, Lansingburg about two hundred thousand?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm not saying I want to do that, I'm just.
Right, you're saying there's.
Trying to.
You have to figure out how you're going to pay for it.
Right.
If you're going to do it this year.
Right, and even if you're going to do it next year.
Right.
You know, with, this is, this is saying eight percent. But when you start looking at the other things, we're, we're talking, you know, around probably ten percent.
And that's not the minimal kind of thing. Right, and that's not, uh, addressing the retirement.
Retirement, probably we're talking closer to twenty percent decrease.
And if you're going to do anything with this or going to lock out the door. You're going to need that branch because if the work gets contemplated here, probably what is that a book? Uh, I would say with the proportionability for a period of time.
I think we try to look at, try and phase that to the way to stay open. But yes, there will be, uh, adding swing states available would be. Probably beneficial, but, uh, I don't know that it would necessarily. Change a decision on that process. Based on that at this time.
Do we have any? Gratitude for raising money, other than that. Grant, we have grants. Grants usually are recovered.
And, and they're also one-shot deals. If you're trying to figure out something sustainable in the long run.
Because, you know, if we, we make a commitment to continue this, but it's not just for this year.
We are, we are a public entity, we are a district. We have, we don't have to do what the sewer district would not do and run a fish fry on the sidewalk to raise money. You're going to have to go to taxes, folks. And by the way, everybody knows price has shot up this year. We can, we can show.
Right, like you're also talking, everybody who's paying his taxes also experiences eight percent increase in cost of living. And our circulation is down sixty seven percent. I think it's a hard sell. I, you know, obviously I love the library, but I think it's a hard sell in this environment. A twenty percent increase in our taxes.
A twenty percent increase.
And, yeah, I, you know, people I talk to, uh, and I talk to people who say to me, hey, I don't believe in increasing taxes, but it's a library.
Right.
So they, they vote for it. Uh, but a lot of people have said, no, as long as you keep it small. It's, uh, that's, they vote for it, you know, that's what individuals, individuals who both you and I know. Yep, have said that to me.
The definition of small, or lasting, so twenty percent is, is significant.
They were talking about twenty percent, but I can check with them. Yeah. Eight percent is small.
Yeah.
Right, and, you know, part of the, the approach we use is by saying, hey, it's just a cup of coffee.
Right.
You know, and let's say, but your taxes are a hundred dollars, so, and that twenty, twenty percent would be twenty dollars. And it, you can't sell it that way anymore. That's going to be the dollar amount, not the percentage. And you've got to really.
Well, it would be the first time, I think, that an organization put a big chunk, huh, big percentage on the ballot. I, I recall the city doing sixteen percent one year.
Yeah.
Already did something like that, eighteen percent, when they opened the branches and found they didn't have enough money to run them.
Yeah.
Uh, we have a, we have an issue.
To restrict.
That, that you can sell.
I think if you try to a cup of coffee every year, you're, you're never running catch up.
No, 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 absolutely not anymore.
You need to make a.
And that's the case with things that have been under abundant for all these years. So now we're, we're playing catch up.
Yeah, I think. I think people understand twenty bucks isn't what I use to the year.
Well, as Carolyn says, the, the same people, there are people on the other side who have had, are having difficulties.
Well, there's always going to be two sides to the, to the story. But I, I, I think, you know, if you approach people with a real problem.
Right, but I think if this is what, you know, and I'm all for, let's put it all in there and put it all out there. But we as a board have a responsibility to really get out there and make sure the story is told.
Oh, yeah, that's kind of, you know.
I mean, we can't just think, okay, we're going to put twenty percent in and then sit back here and say, oh, we'll see how it all goes. I mean, we're going to have to. Do a lot, a lot more than we were.
Not just the board, I think all staff needs to do.
You know, again, there are certain processes that are appropriate and not appropriate, especially if you have to do. In, in selling something and in a way where we got into certain amounts of trouble, shall we say? But, um, and there's certain things that even as a board, we can certainly promote the narrative. We can promote the.
Well, that's the thing. I mean, it's the narrative.
The narrative, we just can't ever tell anybody how to vote.
Yeah, right.
I mean, there are, there are, there are, I don't want to say restrictions, but there are certain things that we can and can't do. But certainly getting out there and making sure that narrative is really clear.
Right.
Well, you can't. You can't tell them how to vote. You can't tell them what we're.
No, no. And I don't know if it really helps.
It's the narrative that's going to sell the whole thing, I think.
As you were saying, with the current eight percent inflation rate.
Yeah.
Put out eight percent increase for the whole year.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we if we see that for a couple of years, throws out your whole salary set.
Right. Speaking of which, you know, I I'm going to interject this here because Carolyn kind of talked about that two years and should be done too. We talked about two years.
Mm-hmm.
And if that's what the board too also thinks that I'll call I call the prevailing wage schedule. So not to confuse myself, that that's the schedule that we're looking at the other libraries and our competitors. Um, that that process should be institutionalized within our our financial policies and our our board policy, that every two years that will be done. It won't be just a maybe or a promise that it actually becomes part of our.
Responsibility as.
Exactly. And it says that every two years, this document will be revised. And then we go on from there.
You haven't said reviewed?
Say what?
Reviewed as opposed to revised?
No, revised. Literally that we go out and get those numbers like, you know, Carolyn took charge of. But that's not revising salary schedule.
I said.
So I I I use the word revise because we took numbers, we got new numbers, and we came up with new schedules.
Right. But we could assess it and find out that, okay, we're okay.
Oh, yeah, right.
That's what you're, that's what he's saying.
Yeah, gathering gathering that information, prevailing wage. I'll I'll make it, I won't use a verb all the same. And we do that, we institutionalize that process. And I think that's really important.
I agree.
There's times when the cost of living, you know, is hardly anything.
Let me know.
Yeah, you don't change.
And I will say this for the longest time, you know, we were going over the tax cap. We weren't doing anything to, uh, keep up with some of it and and on the last, some, you know, several years. It might not be, there were small increases, but we were certainly trying to catch up and and make it more.
Now, that was a whole different time.
Equitable. Well, yeah, now it's just fine.
Everything is totally different.
I know. It's a whole new world, but I I will speak to the last two years half that there wasn't effort made to.
Yeah, we we were four and a half, five percent, pretty common.
Yeah, before it was under two.
And people supported that. I mean, that's another thing. That was really, you know, great. People supported the library. They supported going over the tax cap.
And for a while, this board would do that. So, you know, I will give credit to that. But, um, you know, there's going to be a lot of other miscellaneous costs. We were talking about some of them. Um, insurance, um, if you looked at that trustee training piece. Now, if if a trustee gets trained, the charge can go to the library. I said that lightly and just. And I understand probably why they put it in there, but, you know, there's little things that will add up, a lot of little things.
Yeah, that's weird, though.
I know. But that's just one other thing. And there's there's a whole bunch of others, big ones, little ones.
For example, to fulfill the training requirements, doesn't need you to travel all over.
No.
Right.
It doesn't mean. You don't need to incur a lot of expense.
Yeah, so we're going to put a whole other thing, but it's just another expense. And, you know, when you look at, yeah, training.
If somebody requests, who gets to approve or un?
Good question. It's not, that has not been, you know, unfunded mandate.
Do I?
Denied. No, you can't. But anyway, so it's it's all be little things too that, you know, the nickels and the dimes do add up.
Or do we find a way to sponsor the training and make more? If only sell it on the launch, sell it on the box launch.
So let me get this, anyways, I just back to what this sounds good. So we are, are we approving this salary schedule? Are we approving the salary schedule for twenty twenty-two? Or are we just waiting until twenty twenty-three?
Um, well, I guess I present it because since it's seventy-seven, ten percent of the budget before the budget, write up another budget.
Okay.
I need to know what people are thinking.
Right. But I mean, you're saying that it's not, okay, not. Why? You would if we're going to institute it now, right?
You will approve it when you approve the budget.
Okay. But if we were going to start using it now, we would have to prove it.
Oh, yeah. And I don't see how you're going to do that.
Okay.
I would like because it's not going to be in this year's budget.
Right, sorry.
Actually, I'd like a way to get some of these. I mean.
Well, I was just, I was a little concerned because the heading is salary scheduled twenty twenty-two. So that's.
No, I know. But that's because our other one was twenty twenty, but it didn't go into effect till twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
It's just the way I I label.
That's okay. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
I will say that it's embarrassing to advertise and and interview people for library assistant when it's below fifteen.
I agree, yeah.
Can we offer a hiring bonus? That's not part of the.
I'm serious.
Prefer for this year to try and.
Right. Then you have a one-time expense. You can say, here's, I realize this is low. We're working to get this higher. We're discussing right now, I can offer you.
But then I I see that, I see your point, but I also say to myself, then what about the person who's been working here and is only making thirteen?
You're right.
That you have to, yeah.
Right.
See, that's why.
Right.
That's why it's not easy. For example, if I say, okay, you know, tomorrow library assistant, that's fifteen dollars now.
Right.
I have four or five people that have changed.
Right.
Right, yeah. So you go. And I thought you described we're not just for the new hire. This is for all staff.
And that's that's how this works in terms of how I figured the hundred and four thousand. That everybody, whoever corresponds, for example, to step five and the old one will be step five in the new one. And that's significant change, yeah.
Yeah.
But you have to do it then.
Yeah, yes.
Um, it's harder to take than more than senior, senior staff.
Yeah.
What is minimum wage?
What's what?
Minimum wage? Seven twenty-five?
Um.
Seven twenty-five?
No, that's that's.
No. Uh, thirteen.
It's thirteen something.
That was.
It depends which region of the state you're in.
Okay, but several minimum wages.
It's thirteen dollars and twenty cents.
Yeah.
There you go.
Joy.
Thank you. Thank you, Joy.
Sure.
Looking for the poster, Joy.
It's on the other door, Paul, the UPS door.
You said twenty cents, Joy?
Thirteen dollars and twenty cents, right.
Yeah. But again, you know, that was discussed, the whole minimum wage thing was discussed like a couple of years ago. It's like night and day up. Between two years ago and then. Nobody pays thirteen dollars.
The reality is, if you post a job for minimum wage in the newspaper, somebody should rack their knuckles for wasting money to buy the advertising. Nobody's going to pay the jobs.
The basic, your basic starting for all these positions is fifteen at least.
Yeah.
And like I said, um, Stuart is over fifteen. Plus they plus they give bonuses for sales.
What do they?
Yeah. Yeah, you know what they have those, right? The staff who pushes those get more money. So I had to buy two handcans.
Low in cost, I just. They want.
Okay, so we're not talking about instituting this.
In twenty-two.
In twenty twenty-two.
No, I think that would be very difficult. Given, yeah, I mean, libraries, I mean, like us, unlike a private corporation, we've kind of locked into the budget for the year.
Right, we can't.
Yeah. Yeah, we, uh, we have understaffed, though, right? In the salary line, because we have.
By sixteen thousand right now, but that's, uh, that's only, yeah.
Just hired two people, right?
We did.
Three.
Actually, we hired three people and we're looking for another one. So it would be four, so.
But that's where I said, a bonus may be a token that could be used from any excess that's there. And you wouldn't have a day or hot starting, you do it once per month or once beginning and another in two or three months or something like that.
End of your bonus, which we encourage people to spend.
Yes. It's also for any of those, and then that could be distributed plus.
Right.
Yeah. Might be happening.
Let's say that we were to to institute a a percentage that doesn't get approved by the the people, Troy. Then we could resort to closing a branch as we've done before, right? I mean.
Yeah, but.
I know, we don't like, you know, nobody wants to, yeah.
Yeah.
We need to fully flush out what the consequences.
Well, and and that could be, you know, another reason to explain to voters why the significant increase would be appropriate. And if we can't do this, then we may need to look at other measures which could be significant.
And we do know that people pricked up their ears when people, when there was discussion about something happening with the branch.
Yeah.
Recently, the meeting, well, they were talking about this, and so what now they were talking about.
There's a strong.
The only branch.
Strong support group for Lantingberg. And you're.
Now, the friends can be mobilized to help us with the narrative, correct?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, maybe it's the best thing that could happen to us is that we would be out there selling the library services, really. You know, much more vocally than we have in the past.
Yeah, it'd be nice to push it at this point because our our use is still bad.
Right.
You know, I mean, every library is down, but I mean, first, trying to get people back in.
There was a cartoon that I really wanted that's real that that said, well, now that I can go out because COVID rates are low. Yeah, I don't have the money because of inflation, I think. Library, library's free.
Yeah.
And truthfully, in times when inflation is high, the library usage usually does go up.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's, you know, in our favor.
People can, you know, they think, well, they can cut back at least in terms of purchasing things like books.
Right.
And, yeah, the library is up there.
It it's a place to drop your kid versus the mall. They can't buy much here, but I live in a bus business.
I think, too, we have, you know, a lot of offering nowadays with digital materials. So I think it's very attractive for people who are trying to cut back.
So I know that we don't have to make a recommendation, so, but as a board, are we supposed to say, yes, we like this salary schedule? Is that what?
Well, you know, I
Looks good to me.
I have to sit down and make a budget. I mean, um, it's it's nice not to have to make three or four different budgets.
It turns out it's the biggest piece in your budget.
Yeah, I can say.
One is that potential.
I I can do a budget and they'll be, you know, it'll be carefully considered. Uh, that's a.
Right, right. Where did this come from?
So, yeah, if I if I, you know, plug this into it.
I think you have no choice but to, yeah.
I agree.
So now I just aggressively go to safety.
Not that.
Not yet.
Not yet.
I mean, we haven't discussed the the surveys yet, but the surveys indicated that more people found salary important than the return.
Yeah.
But it was a close.
It's interpretation because. Remember, you did a survey of, what is it, twenty-eight, twenty-seven people?
Okay, um, uh, twenty-three, twenty-three surveys were distributed to a tonically twenty. One survey will return.
Okay. Yeah, you have to remember, okay, there's going to be two different sets of people. They're going to be there. And there's more people who are younger and working at a lower level than there are older people at a higher level. And those older people at the higher level, yes, they wanted to be in the state jobs. And as I pointed out before, we have a lot of people back retired. What do I get? It it only hits you when you're forty.
There may be more awareness of it because this is the state capital, too.
Oh, by the way, the, since we had that presentation, the retirement system has increased in the state budget. Previously, you were required, you needed ten years to best, each year's five and six. That in this budget, the language is included, that reduces it by five.
Sure, well, that's a big difference. But you you and so you sound more like you were agreeing with me.
No, 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 I'm just pointing out that there might be two schools of thought here with the staff. But the staff still is very concerned and very interested in the New York State retirement system. I mean, I would think that we should we should say that the survey was, uh, some kind of reality here.
Right.
You you have to get to look at the fact that our salaries are so in need of, you know, change that it was difficult to overlook when you did a survey and staff said, yeah, my God, it's terrible. We need to do something with it. So I don't, I don't think we're, I think we still need to be carefully considered in the New York State retirement system. And and, you know, if you put these things together, might be easier to sell.
I agree.
Yeah.
As one as one entity, kind of like we're just trying to bring up the whole, you know, employee package.
Yeah, being being.
A little standard.
Uh, region, uh, people are are very familiar with the New York State retirement system. They will out of the ring.
Right. And I think you have to understand, too, that when we became a special library district, it was implied at that time to almost all the employees that we wouldn't join the New York, New York State. But that was a benefit of the whole thing. And really, the only benefit was that we became civil service, which in retrospect has not been much of a benefit. You know, so.
Maybe not a benefit.
Yeah, as employees, that was that was a big part of becoming a district, you know, we saw as as a benefit that now, how many years later?
I think I think it has been, well, not not the 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 retirement aspect, but it certainly provided a more dependable revenue stream.
Yes.
It certainly was beneficial.
Oh, definitely. Well, civil service, maybe. That's, I'm talking about the testing and the how we hire and that.
It's been much more difficult, cumbersome.
Yes.
Yeah. But it put the library on a much sounder financial.
Definitely, yes.
I think it's also an area where people understand prevailing wage um, and how important that is to maintain a living wage. Um, and so I think, you know, some of the things we're talking about are going to resonate vocally. Um, you're always going to get people who, you know, are going to argue against any tax or any tax increase, or they're going to be anti-tax. Yeah, that's going to happen. They'll write little men's letters and sort of go around. And that happened before when we first established the district. That's not everyone. It's not necessarily the jury. I don't know. I just think that it may not be a bad idea to put this.
Right. Because I think there are a lot of people out there who probably don't use a library. Right, because I think there are a lot of people out there who probably don't use a library, but do support the idea of the library, and probably don't come out and vote when it's time to vote, because it's not in their, it's not in their wheelhouse, it's not, they're not seeing it all the time. You know, they're not really thinking about it right, that was, no, wheelhouse is not the right word. But it's not on their radar, so if we became more vocal, then you would hope that you'd get more people out. You know, like that's a.
And you think they would vote in approval?
I think there's a lot of people who would vote, don't use a library, who are supportive of libraries. I think there's people with money who don't use a library, who would support the whole idea of what a public library stands for.
And they.
Get the complaint so that, implying that if you had the vote on the same day as the, the general election, that, that would, you'd have more people voting against it.
Right.
It's why we don't hold it on, on a same.
That's not why we don't.
Yeah, no, well, I'm, I'm not saying, no, I'm not saying that, that's what people say.
Yeah, but that's what we have to know as board members when we do, you know.
Well, why, why do we, why do we hold it on, on a different day? Because somebody told, yeah, somebody told me, somebody told me that we had to hold it on a different day. And when I looked, I couldn't find that.
Yeah.
So, so what you're saying is that we have the option to hold it on a different day, we don't have that, there, there's a catch.
Well, there's a reason why this happened. In two thousand and nine, the library approached and went on the ballot to establish a district. But we couldn't control the ballot. We couldn't say that the budget, and, and, you know, when you approve the district, you approve the budget. The Board of Elections decided what was gonna be on the ballot. And they took the budget off that part, and you had the, uh, approve it separately. The district passed with no budget. So you couldn't.
So because it was on the same day as the other ballot, they had the control about the image and structure of the show.
The Board of Elections controlled what was on the ballot. And I don't think you wanted to do that.
We want to be able to, that, as we.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Um, so we decided to put it, and every, almost every district is not at the same time as the general election.
It's like.
There's no district I know of that are the same time as the general election. This doesn't happen, school district isn't.
Right.
Player districts, you name it, they're not at the same.
Player districts are actually set by state law, not at the general election.
Yeah.
And they have a litany of dates as to when they have to offer their budget to the public, all, all that.
So, but, but, but for us, it's not. So when people say that, that, you know, they don't like the fact that it is an only general election, we can't say, oh, it's, it's required by law, that it be a separate time. It's a choice that, that we're making.
So we can put together a ballot. We organize a ballot as we want to communicate clearly what is, is supposed to be controlled by some other organization.
Although, you know, we only have one issue, so, well, we have the board too.
Yeah, yeah, we have our board members and also.
And the problem is budget would be, budget ends up on the front of the back, and anyone will tell you that anything, any proposition on the back does not get the same attention that the personnel raises to.
You might also put a binding issue on the same. I think it's better to control your own ballot rather than let the Board of Elections decide, because general elections, especially with presidential elections, they have a bunch of stuff on that. And then decide what's gonna happen.
It, it is a, I, it has been something I've heard a lot, but it's a complaint.
And, and, you know, you're saying that, but I think that's a, you know, a reason why it's not, and I think it's a good reason why it's not.
But, and then like your example, that's a great example there, that, oh, you have a library, yes, you have a budget, no.
Right.
Make some sense.
Yeah.
You can't vote for the other.
That's because they separated the two issues rather than put them together. You, you put them together and say, you establish a library with this project, you know.
So that is when this began? When we changed the structure of this library?
Well, that was in two thousand and nine, when the, the district failed, it, it passed in two thousand and ten, the next year.
Ah, okay. So try to beat that nine to get work.
That's when we put it on a separate.
Yeah, okay, but thank you, this is very.
Had it on the same day, but had it here, you know, told you that, but did it on the same day as election day or that?
I, I don't think that.
The worst of my work.
Right, people wouldn't wanna do that.
Then I gotta go two places to vote?
Right.
Well, they have to go to the library anyway, they're supposed to think, hey.
Plus, it's, I mean, it's not like you change it every year, it's been the same date, always, so it's not, like, it should be on somebody's radar, but they think it's a real trick on our part.
This was when it failed.
Right, well, it's the same as, you know.
September twenty nine was, yeah, this was.
It's actually more convenient for me to have them separated, because then I can concentrate on each of them.
But it's the same things people say about their school taxes, but, you know, it's always on a separate.
No, this is when it passed, oh, I'm sorry, it was two thousand and eight, the presidential elections, you know, I mean. It was, uh.
Take something close for two thousand and.
When that's where they didn't even want it on the ballot, because it was a presidential election.
I, I'm sure, because the earliest budget I see is two thousand and eleven online, they don't have a budget for.
Two thousand and ten, um, two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten.
I, I guess it's not that too important. But to get back to the survey, um, getting, getting the letter signed by everybody, to me, kind of implied that's what everybody wanted. Uh, had getting the survey showed to me that that wasn't the most important thing for everybody, you know. And, and you can see where somebody who is, is new, who's fresh out of school, may have a lot of debt, it might feel much more worthwhile for them to get it in salary than to get it in pension, you know. But it only makes sense, different people feel differently.
But I think the numbers were high enough for both of those that we should look at, try and try to improve both.
Like, I think we should certainly discuss both of them, but I look at us having to do the bucks right for the library. But, yeah, so I wouldn't do anything else.
And off the bat, I'm gonna tell you that I fully support becoming part of the New York State Retirement System.
Because you think it's the best thing for the library.
And a fairest thing for the people that are here.
But you're not here to decide what the fairest thing is for the people who work here. Your fiduciary responsibility is to make the best decision for the library.
And I do think it is, because I think it's gonna add stability to a library that we have not had.
If you're not fair to people, you got nothing.
Yeah.
You're gonna start losing institutional knowledge too, because you're gonna be having these people who have been here forever, who are interested in the retirement, they're gonna leave. And we've already lost some of that, we've lost a lot of institutional now, now, over the last few years.
But, I, I, you know, I just, I think it's important to know what your basis should be for answer, you know, for just making a decision. That, yes, we certainly would like to see the best of her from the staff, but that, our responsibility is to do what's best for the library. Were we going to have a representative from TIAA, correct? Some to, yeah, there, they can just, to be able to do it.
No.
Why?
They're not coming.
They're not interested in coming. Now, I know, they, there were some questions they said, but they had to be answered from the other side, like this guy was about the benefits side, the first thing. We had questions that really are more forward questions, that are questions to the people who are figuring out what the cost at the whole. Are we, should, should we have, I, I don't know her name, Joanne something.
Yeah, we can ask the questions of TIAA.
No, I'm talking about, about the, the retirement, and like, how they.
Yeah, we, how, we had those questions, many of them were answered, um, Joy, I don't know, you.
Yes, I was going, I was going to come up with several dates upcoming, so that we can get Jennifer, I believe her name, Jennifer Hampstead, to come and meet with the board. I asked the department heads if they were interested in attending that, but since most of their questions were already answered previously, and this was more on the employer side, we could just have the board attend that. Would that work for everybody, like a doodle poll like we did before?
That'd be great, thank you, Joy.
Okay, great, and then the next thing is TIAA, I've been trying to contact them several times, and they would like us to contact them individually, they don't want to, uh, meet with people as a whole.
They can, uh, answer questions though, can't they?
Yes, they can answer questions, they gave us, um, forms that.
Some questions too, though.
Yes, definitely, you can email to me and I can forward those. Um, it's just a generic admin line that they have, so they don't have a specific, um, representative for us.
Okay. Joy, we were talking about a way to compile some of the answers that we say got from New York State Retirement, where, you know, they answered the, the questioner separately, but didn't address it in that meeting.
Yes.
Um, Carolyn's talked about doing a Google Doc of some sort, but it, we wouldn't possibly, probably put it in just the Dropbox, because staff can't get into the Dropbox. Because some of them might, some of the questions and answers might affect employees, and they might affect, you know, some of the things that the board's looking at, so. So, yeah, we're, we're trying to figure out a way to make sure that all those, is you, you kind of were the, is it the hub to some of the questions and answers from New York State Retirement?
Yep. Yeah, we can definitely create a Google form that anybody can fill out, and it'll compile some of the questions. Or I could just, you know, and it'll just be a link, and everybody can use it if they want to.
Okay. So, yeah, the mechanics to be worked out.
Yes, but I, originally, I just wanna add, well, I just wanna ask for, is it okay for me to proceed to go ahead and set up some dates? It'll probably be similar, virtual, five to six, or six to seven, up to you, um, to meet with the representative for the employer slash board side.
Okay, um, everyone, Seth, you still with?
Yeah, yeah, I think there's definitely need in that guidance, Jennifer, and I hadn't gotten a response.
Right, yeah, I'll, I'll, normally when I email everybody, they respond faster that way. I'm not sure why, but. But yes, I will do that, is that all right? I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Oh, yes, yes, please, thank you.
Yep.
Well, I think we've covered a lot of parts of this. Um, and even though there's numbers here, they were, they're kind of, that's worth for it. Arbitrary, so I think talking about number six, the questionnaire, the word fall, that we move it up, so let me move that one up, that makes, makes sense, yep. Okay, just the way we were kind of discussing it, the way you just typed it up, so, so let us talk about the questionnaire and responses. Um, everyone, I don't know if everyone had a chance to look at the comments, the pages, though they're not copied in your package, but all of them are in the Dropbox, so everyone has a chance to read them and see them and ponder.
I, I will.
I'm just curious.
I will, um, abstain, um, uh, I'm not, I'm, I'm abstaining, not for the record. I'll follow the guidance of the group.
Okay. Again, I'm just trying to get some feel for what people have to respond back to, if people have gotten the chance. They wanna say anything to staff, I know there's, staff's still here, I know.
Well, I would, I'll say something, okay, but only, and, and I'll say this because I was the one who was really pushing for the survey when we first started out, that maybe the survey didn't come out, and the things that were on it were not all things that I had thought of at the time, and I think maybe there was some missteps or miscommunication, missteps on our part, um, in how we listed things. Um, that, that, that staff obviously found offensive, and I apologize for that, I, you know, I think that I understand where they're coming from, and, and I can understand how they would feel that way. Um, but that was not the intention, and I hope they really so.
Yeah. And, uh, I know, you know, as a member of the board, and it, it's hard when you wanna talk to, to a group and say, this is kind of the feeling of other people, and you talk for yourself, but, um, a- as one of the authors of that survey, I, I want to both thank and apologize to staff. Uh, those comments were definitely telling, informative, necessary to hear. So, you know, thank you to everybody who responded. Um, I, I really wanna say that the board and those members who participated in preparing that survey never meant it to be insulting. Uh, we never meant to imply that reading any specific item, um, would mean removal of any other item, that, that wasn't the point. Um, we also really do realize that having a safe, healthy work environment is something, you know, you're entitled to, period, you know. Um, we were just trying to get some information to help us through this, you know, the process, especially as the budgeting process goes through. Um, it was just meant to be the additional tool. Um, and I'm really, especially personally, because, sorry that that was not communicated appropriately. Um, and one of the things I hope that we can at least talk about today too, is how we can do a better job at communicating with staff. Um, there have been some suggestions made, like an internal newsletter, um, chats with the board, chat time with the board. Um, but those have been proposed, and, you know, more, more suggestions are really welcome. So, again, my thank you and my apologies for that. So, um, open up to, like, what's about what people were saying in this? And how we should go about this?
Well, I think, I think we can all agree that, you know, security, safety are not a benefit, I think that was a big part of it.
It, that, it wasn't trying to get at where it is for benefits, it was trying to, to help us, because we have to make choices. And, and we're looking to the staff to tell us what was important to them, where if we had to make a decision between hiring more security and, you know, getting more, the library more comfortable to work in, whatever, just trying to.
Right.
To get their help.
I understand that, I just think we, we need to acknowledge that we don't, as a board, do not see those as a benefit. It's more asking you about your work environment and what, what's important to you, what, you know, what you feel.
It also helps us find out about boys' thoughts.
Yes.
You know, say, something like safety is not a binary, safe or unsafe, it's a relation thing in recent memory. Where did your choice, where the lighter car came, where the backup came? Was it important to you or was it not? And safety is also very broad term, so it could be one thing, my safety, and so must be something completely different, um, so.
Well, and that's why it was so important to have input, because I may think, hey, this is something that's really important, and be advocating for it and put it in the budget, only, you know, and it's something that's not important to the staff at all, and we were trying to avoid making those mistakes by getting input from the staff, rather than just making the decision in to what we thought were, would be things that are important.
I, I could, I also have been calling the kid coming down in the summer time, because I thought this was one of the coolest buildings in the city to hang out and read it.
No, coolest doesn't. Because it's written on ice.
It, it was, in, in the seventies, seventies.
And it was?
Yes. In the seventies, it was a lot cooler. In the seventies, it was a lot cooler than it sounds, I gotta ask us, but.
Right, but I mean, even then, this building retains heat like there's no tomorrow.
Yeah, if you do this survey in August, everybody is thinking.
I, I just think that from the comments, and I'm not sure I got through all of them, there were certainly a lot of comments, and sometimes it's a little difficult to read. Um, but I did feel that it indicated a, a lack of communication because I would look at some of the things and say, but we're doing this. So, but obviously, it's not things invade the people, that these are things we're, we're trying to do.
Again, we get that, that is, what does safety mean to you as opposed to what does safety mean to somebody else? Could be, you know, we're, we're doing that, but we're not doing.
It's like, oh, uh, you should, you should override the tax cap. Well, as Evelyn said, we've been overriding the tax cap. What else? There, there were just a, a number of things that, that jumped out at me of, of that. And as I say, I need to go back and, and go through things again and look at them more carefully.
How, how many people actually take advantage of the health insurance fund? Do we have a number on that?
I can't remember, um.
You, if you give me a second, I can look.
I know, you have to look it up, I have to look it up every time, but if I look it up, it's gonna take me, I don't know.
We have, we have eight people enrolled right now. Yes.
Yeah.
Really? A lot of people are full-time. Can you imagine trying to get fifty percent of your salary? You'd be given most of your salary to cover your.
But, yeah, I mean, that's, that's a problem of salary.
So, how many full-time people do we have?
Here we are. Joy, do you know how many full-time people are on staff?
Give me one second.
Full-time?
Yeah.
So that puts it in context then.
Right.
But I mean, there's, there's people like twenty-five hours and twenty hours, which, they also might, you know, it turns.
Oh, yeah, right.
I mean, that's, that's a salary issue. It's the health insurance premiums and the fact that they're going up at the rate that they are. I mean, you can take your whole salary just by health.
There are nine full-time.
Wow. Yeah, we've got nine full-time.
So, almost everybody.
But like I said, there's a few more that are closer to full-time.
Got it. Thank you. Not need choices.
And that's part of the reason, totally, you don't have a lot of people in the current system that you want. There's only about five. I think that's, uh, why you're getting the focus on salaries.
Is there, are we buying? I'm sorry, I, I, this way. Are we buying our health insurance and things like our work mix comp through some kind of consortium or group?
I'm sorry, I don't know.
Are we buying our health insurance or, and things like our work mix comp separately or through a larger consortium?
We buy it through CDPHP.
But we're not a buying group, we're buying our own.
Right.
Oh, right. We're, we're buying our own, we tried various groups and premiums through China. We're, we're more. So, we haven't actually looked at that for a couple of years. Looked at, um, the, um, mental county, um.
Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce. Which was probably one of the groups in Virginia. Yeah, I, I, it don't seem to be much of a break, if at all, so far.
So, like, the library system doesn't have a group? That each wife is, and they don't, they.
Not really.
They're tolerated.
No, they aren't.
I know, with work mix comp, there, there was something in the county that was doing.
There's a lot of differences out there, but, I mean, libraries are going through different providers. So there hasn't been a real push for that. Again, it's partly because, so you have the state group that, that brings the, the science, anyway.
I, um, I have to say, I was surprised to see the figure that you came up with for the increase in the salary schedule because it's more like ten percent. Um, when you were going through the process, you were predicting something like fifteen percent.
Well, like I said, I took the data we had and worked with that. And now, it doesn't all come out the same percentage.
No.
Um, it varies, but that's why we did a survey, to find out what was out there. And I was just talking about fifteen percent off the top of my head.
I thought, I thought it would say something like you were seeing in, well, in the data.
You can't.
That was coming in.
I was, I was talking mostly about, um, you know, what I saw from Nylon, you know, and that's a lot of variation there, and it's very anecdotal, you know, for me to use that kind of data without, you know, something more substantial to back it up. Um, so that's what I was saying, I mean, and then I, you know, I love this connectivity, and that's like, almost twenty percent or.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know where they get all that money, but.
Well, they're county, I think.
Yeah, it's county system, but, you know, we have libraries who have substantial budgets that don't pay that. That's the highest pay I've seen in, I'm stating.
Sounds like they're trying to compete with other issues that may be detractors.
Even, I think that's a recent, I don't think it was big like Luthley Park.
I didn't have, but we couldn't get a, we couldn't get a figure from Luthley Park. But, you know, if we got a figure, we, I averaged in this connected figure anyway, so, gives us at least something, you know, that would, would require. But heck, I, you know, if you average that in and then averaging unit, you got a pretty good number. But I, I used a lot of different libraries to add it. I think it was, what, from what I've seen, I think it was reasonable. And I think if your schedule was, if your starting page was there, I think you're complete.
So from this survey, I mean, I think it became quite obvious that there's a problem of communication. So is that an admin? Would that be the admin committee who would start to try to address that, or is that us as a board?
That's definitely, yeah, it's an awesome board.
So what are, what are our suggestions?
Well, like I said, some of it's, the suggestion had been made that we, you kind of digest a newsletter, but I think that's too far removed.
Right.
I had already responded to, um, and we're chats, you know, like different days, different times of day, evening, where, you know, we have a, a space in library and staff can come and talk to us. And I think we need some other ways, for example, that we can let them know, you know, some of them are listening now, but, I don't know, things don't filter always the way they could or should, and we have to get by all any obstacles as it filters down.
So when you're talking about chats, it would be like, okay, on Tuesday from eight to whatever, not eight.
Well, yeah, okay.
From nine to, nine to two, Carolyn will be here, or Thursday, Marie will be here, is that what you're saying?
Yes, something like that.
Different, like, not like the whole board will be sitting here.
No.
But like.
Right. You know, it could be, a, a few of us, or our board members who, and we will plan who.
Right.
So we know someone's actually there, but coming in and.
Right, a board member will be there.
Updates. We have to figure out a way to keep them aware, like Marie said, the, of the things that we have done, the things that we are doing, um.
Kind of way for us to know from there.
Exactly.
When we're missing the mark.
It, it's, it's a two-way conversation, it's, it's a two-way street, and we've got to understand how they're saying things. And to be honest, there's, I had thought from the fact that we had discussed these things, and people had listened, and that as we dispersed the questionnaire and talked about it, they were aware. But obviously, there is, there's a flaw, and I believe since, so, in, in how it got communicated, and that might not be the only thing. So it's making sure that there's that conversation between us and them. It might be not the flaw that's most recommended, like went to the director all the time, but there's got to be a way that we can listen and we can explain back and forth.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm willing to be a, a person here. It, it, it's an internal outreach, you know, we were talking about, they got, they'll back something if you want to put it into committee. Could be, I think it's still a board thing, but we could all.
No, 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 I just, I just think we need to address it somewhere.
Yeah, we do, we have, we have to. But if there's other suggestions, please.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, now, essentially, we're not supposed to undermine Paul, but, uh, I, I definitely, you know, that's like, you know, if you read the handbook and you listen to all the, the sessions.
All right, yeah.
That, you know, and I assume that it's built on a past experience where that's occurred, you know, that.
Oh, sure.
People try to, board members try to be the director rather than their role. So, Paul, how, how do you, what do you think of, of this?
Well, I think, you know, there's always room for more communication, more, you know, two-way series, and I, but I think, you know, your concern is valid, it's valid, it's a concern that I would have. Um, in that, uh, you know, basically, the director hires the staff, and, you know, that's the relationship, and the board has a relationship directly with the director. Um, and that's how it should work, but, you know, there's, um, you know, information that the board has, or, or the board can simply, uh, talk about their, you know, re-pensioned various issues, um. You just completed, you know, a grant application for an A-FAC system, we're trying to get, you know, this problem solved. I mean, that's one of the things that we're working on, but you had firsthand experience of that, so speaking about that is, you know, information and something the staff, you know, has been interested in for years. So, yeah, I think there are things that you folks know, and, and from your perspective, that would, you know, be of interest to all of us in the staff.
I, I just, I'm sorry.
No, I, I was going to move on to my second question, so if you want to talk to this flanker.
You're sure, it, it's an adjacent point, so please, I apologize.
So my second question is, I know that you send an incredible amount of time here at the library, Evelyn. Uh, I'm, so I'm surprised that the communication has, has not, is not stronger. And I'm getting feedback on being your case.
Right, I, I, you know, I'm not gonna, it's, this is not a defense or not defense of Evelyn, but I, it's all of our responsibilities, you know.
So I'm just trying to understand.
Well, I think that's easy, you know.
I, it isn't easy for me to understand, that's why I'm asking the question. She, she's made herself very available, and yet it hasn't met the need. So I'm just trying to figure out why that is. That one, and it's certainly not a criticism of her.
No, but I also think, again, it's like, we, we could say the same thing to Paul. Paul is our, our conduit, and we're, you know, you can ask him the same question.
So then is, are the comments in the, to the unhappy, is it specific to, uh, is it a general, are we, or is it a question about things that we're doing specifically?
I would not say it's on we, because as far as I understand, that's kind of, but I think there's a, okay, so, um, when, when I came in right after, uh, is there, there's the comments written, and there's comments that were made to me when I went. Um, which had certainly the, of a different flavor. Um, it was shocking, I think that was the word I used, I, I, I was shocked, um, and pretty sure about smack, like, we actually got from some people. Um, and, um, but, wow. Here I am, and I thought it'd be very supportive of staff, and to hear some of the things said was, was difficult. Um, it has also been, I've also been advised that, you know, they weren't, it wasn't trying to be personal, but there's a lot of pent-up concern about promises made in the past about the retirement system. It's about some of the things that you added in there in that questionnaire, uh, that shouldn't be on their shoulders, and the fact that some people thought that, you know, again, we were trying to take something away from them by saying, if you want this, and you're gonna, we're gonna take it away, take X way. To be honest, I'm, I'm still kind of trying to process through it myself and deal with it, which is why I'm going, I, I'm so suggesting that we find better ways to communicate. And if this doesn't happen again, um, some of this might have to be a, you know, like that word institutionalized versus just me talking to staff. Sometimes when I'm trying never to cross that line, you know, there is that line.
And, 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 and.
And I'm not their boss.
And one person is not the board.
Exactly.
So it's, I, I, I'm struggling a little bit with how to build this.
Yeah.
Connection to a group. And opposite or individual encounters, but, right.
So.
And then it's the, the director.
So, you know, it's trying to explain, no, these are, these are things we understood that we were really trying to make this, someone had suggested that we had, um, collapsed the questionnaire instead of, and like, but if we did that, we would have had to delay again, because it would have gone back to the board, that we would have to talk about it, that we'd have to go out, and there's been so many delays and so many pieces of this that I, personally, I didn't think that was a good idea. I, naive, naively, on my part, I was thinking, well, if you do like, you don't, you don't check that off. Or you make the comment, which is really why I, I advocate strongly about putting a comment section there, so people could say.
What they have.
I appreciate those. Are much appreciated. Part of the, not, the other verbal, not verbal, that is difficult.
But obviously, we should have gotten their input on the survey before it was taken.
Right.
Uh, but I was referring more to the informational kinds of things, not, not a criticism or, or concerns that were voiced, but, um, because Evelyn spends so much time here and available, um, it, it's just, yeah, still, there wasn't anything, there, there were things that people just didn't know about.
Enough.
And, and so I'm just, and I'm asking, I'm asking because then to try and figure out what is a more effective way of making that happen.
Well, I do think making it more.
Well, I do think making it more formal, like, you know, I can, I can stop in and I can have a, a, a conversation with somebody, but it's not. Sometimes it's just you having a conversation with somebody that you know who works here or whatever. But if you're here as a board member and they come to see you as a board member, then you're making it more formal and then coming. I think then you're, then you're more obligated to bring that information back to the board. And it, it would be helpful too, because Carolyn, you probably know this. I, it's because of the interactions we have. I've been very reluctant for fear of. Being seen as undermining Paul.
Right.
To have much discussion. I think I made some mistakes when I first started with you. Well, I, I. Where I talked to you rather than.
I should have done it, Paul.
Uh, so it might not have mattered to you, but. I, I, it mattered to me. So, yeah, just trying to figure out.
I'm sorry. I don't know. I, I think I have maybe a different reaction to it. I thought. People understood quite a lot. If you read the comments.
Not even about what we were doing. Yeah. I, I think Marie's not saying not understanding what we're, but their details. Some of the things that are inside. But again, that's communication and that's where we go forward in making sure that everyone's really on board somehow. So if anyone has some very specific, like, specific. Implementable ideas, please, you know, share them. That would be really great. Oh, well, we don't have.
I'm not, I'm just. I just know that they made the announcement already, so I don't want to say like.
I would say this, it's been two years working with the research group, which my undergraduate version, we take behaviors. I've seen a lot of that. We take behavior, yeah.
It was more, it was more of like. Well, plus you also, so we have to go to.
I, I'm impressed.
Very quickly, so back to, back to another, like. Anyways, so. Mark about our, getting that, like, you're here on Thursday and you're here on Monday and you're there to talk. So. People have different ways to interpret things. So something that you might hear someone saying. Somebody else could, they could say the same thing with a different person and they would hear it differently. So that, I'm not sure how we would.
Work it up.
Get that to all, be on the same page.
And that's a great point. But again, these are all just ideas and that's something that we can work on. And if you have any suggestions.
Yeah.
How to implement that, please. But, um, because it is.
Yes, go ahead.
So it's really the start of the conversation.
Exactly.
It's not ending here. Oh, no, no. Um, and, and six years, I think, at the time that we talked. Um, so, you know, you, you, I don't know, did you purposely rewrite this in that put in director's report?
You know, I just looked.
It was in there originally.
I have covered almost everything.
Okay.
We did material passive. I would like to just touch a little bit. We are working, uh, getting programs started again, developing show this programs in the building and in person. However, there is a problem going forward. With. When we get this reading room project off the ground. We're gonna have to have some abatement work done. On the asbestos in the blaster. That particular problem seems to imply that there's probably asbestos in most of the blaster. Which is a bit of a concern, particularly with the staff. I've asked. Alpine to come in and. Test the air. They did a, they did tests all around the building. Uh, with the air. And basically, you know, it complies with. The labor department specifications for. Asbestos, you know, airborne asbestos. But it, it's still a concern. There's still a lot of areas in this building that. The blaster is not. And it is, you know. So I think we will need to continue to keep an eye on the, at least testing air as we all. Now, they do that during abatement anyway. But that's another question when we do abate this, and I don't have a plan yet, so I don't know exactly how they're gonna do that. But we'll probably have to close that reading. But what was I saying? The staff has been concerned with other parts of it.
Is the. Has this materials support thing's done for that reading room project?
It's what?
It is, has the materials support available?
Yeah, um, you mean with the plaster? Yeah. It's got asbestos.
If, if possibly, if I may look at it, would be interesting.
Yeah, yeah, I can send that along. I also have.
Yeah. Was there, um, testing done in the basement as well?
No, we're just, just first and second floor.
So, I think that, that part included the flooring, the station, the slab.
The flooring is okay. I mean.
That's a test.
Yeah. Well. Basically, what's underneath there is just wood. And then the linoleum is practically, it's only a couple of years old. But then again, I, we did not test the air in the basement and there's. Yeah, so we probably should do that as well. So I will probably have to continue with. Alpine with some of the air testing. So, going forward, and I forgot to tell you. I spoke with Jim Gondroy at Ling. And he's agreed to come to our building committee meeting on a time.
Excellent.
Seven in the week.
On the what? Twenty? After twenty seven?
Twenty seven?
Twenty seven? In the same day as he retired, so it's the twenty seventh, isn't it?
I don't know. I got an hour sign out there on the twentieth.
No.
It's the fourth.
Langston said twenty second.
Yeah, we switched from third to fourth.
The fourth wins.
Fourth, twenty seven. Twenty seven.
Well, I thought we knew that one day it was gonna be. I didn't sure you say.
We said we.
Oh, there you go, okay.
My calendar, I have it on hold there.
Okay. Oh, great. You can have two meetings if you want. We're having one. As you know, we're just having one.
So we are, so.
Okay.
And I wasn't at that meeting, so that was, it was also my confusion.
One of, one of the things that came out of that. Came out of that discussion with Jim, and so it's when we actually own Blasting Grove Ranch goes leasing. Talking up to sixty one hours. Yeah.
Yeah.
I can tell you that.
Well, I feel the same way about, about this building. Is if we were to rent. Bates with science, and I figured about, I compare it to the, to the city hall, three hundred thousand dollars a year. So instead, that's going into our operating budget for things other than rent. So I see the glass half full. A lot of people say that.
That's what the matrix hopefully will. Make clear where, what makes sense. And then maybe. We'll see. City Hall. Wouldn't it make a great city hall?
Okay.
That's it.
All right, next, if you don't mind, next agenda, I just barrel through the rest of this. Trustee training. Uh, there is a piece in your package. This is everything that's known about the mechanics in the trustee training. Again, it doesn't start till. January of twenty twenty-three, but it's just to get people prepared now and as the mechanics get updated on certain ones. Update everybody on how it's going to work. So those are the, all the. Parts that are in the legislation, the expectations of, of what's gonna happen and speculation interpretation. So unless, does someone have any questions about it that they want to review now or go over now? Yeah, okay. So that's enough for now. We can pick it up some other time. Um, future planning process. So. The, the mechanics of that. Seem to have, let me say issues as it is. I did try, by the way, going back and learning how to do things a little differently. Electronically. It, it seemed to be the same thing. So I'm suggesting that we do an in-person. We start to meet in person. And since there has been a, a strong suggestion. That we really do start with a mission statement. I think that might be a good idea. So, uh, probably two through. You know, the doodle poll, we'll try to pick some time. I don't think, considering the length, like, for example, this board meeting, that doing a board meeting is going to work. And as we go through more of the budget issues, et cetera, in the next few months, it's gonna be more and more difficult to go for that time. So a separate time. It might be easier if we have everything in front of us and we can go through line by line and just. Kind of barrel through it. So unless anyone has any objections. I think we'll pivot in our message during this. Okay, hearing no objections. At least not now. If anyone has any questions, let me know.
Well, I think, like, still. Before we add meeting, uh, I'd like to hear what the topics are for the meetings.
We have to.
We can then. Opt to whether to participate or not.
It's going to the mission state, of the, of the strategic, the plan, the plan that's up, what we have now. And where to be and overlay levels, strategic cases.
On meeting by meeting basis, what the agenda, what the topic will be at least, not necessarily agenda, it's a topic, what that would be.
Well, because on each one, will you be addressing a different.
Component of it.
So just, well, just let us know which.
Yeah, they might be, it might work out that we do a little bit longer, a longer meeting and just go through as much as possible and then. So we'll start with A, B, C. And we'll see what happens. It might be a little bit looser because we've been trying to do this in a way. But what would be done by December?
Let me give us an outline, so of what all of the different topics would be and then maybe we could.
Oh, yeah.
But combine some, but we'd like to know.
Again. If you look, to be honest, if you look at the plan, that, you know, actual plan, it's on the website.
Could we bring the plan to the meeting, not look at the website?
Okay, I think I may have at some point given it to everybody, but I'll do it again. But we can have that, any other possibles and just go from there. Okay. But this is probably, that's probably one of the most important things that as a board would need to do. It's figure out what our, our strategic plan is, our. Long range plan is for the library and what's mission is, why we're here.
I disagree.
Okay. Oh, we still need to update it. We certainly do, because there's a lot of things in there that are just no longer relevant, really off relevance.
Right. I don't worry about where we're gonna track that work.
Exactly, exactly. That, you know, there's many suggestions, whole sections that are no longer.
Around the room.
You got it. Um, okay, so. We're up to. Old business, new business.
I have a little bit, so I wanted to report on the. Downtown Revitalization Initiative Grant that we did get it in. A number of people worked on it. We've been done without them. And I had help too from Virginia. And from Stephanie.
Jeffrey.
In doing it. I think I worked for a lifetime. I did work for a lifetime. I might as well take advantage of the resources. So, yeah, I think they were both helpful. Virginia with her wonderful program that was included in the grant. And Stephanie was gathering some, some statistics. Could be put into it. So we don't know what's gonna happen. We've had, had inquiries from the BRI team. One was. Not, not a valid inquiry. They said, well, can you get this done to, in two years? And I said, wait a minute. I thought it just couldn't be started within two years. So you must agree.
I did see that. It's like, holy cow, you just one of the administrators, and you haven't done it in two years. Oh, actually, no.
Right. Asking me about it and I said, I said, oh, no, what if I blew the whole grant application because I, you know, told Kirsten the wrong thing? But it turned out that we were right. And I figured we were helpful to them, letting them know. The other thing is that. The grant was put in for half the air quality system. For about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second floor. Second floor. You didn't say anything about the first floor. You didn't say anything about the basement. So.
Oh.
No, no, that, that's okay. It's okay. We'll. We'll make use of those, those funds. And if we get it, we'll get it and.
Where are we gonna get the rest of the funds?
We'll go after more grants. We won't do it all in one year.
Well, I think the HSR did, did say that six hundred and fifty thousand was there.
Well, that was the HSR, which didn't include a lot of things.
Okay.
Right there in the beginning, says it does not include general conditions, does not include.
So. Even at that amount. We don't have the resources to do it if. We're not reimbursed for expenses until the project is completed. So we asked the city whether they could back us financially, not by giving us money, but. Low, essentially. Providing the money that we can complete the project. We don't know whether that will be the case, that it. Will we await completion of the project for reimbursement, or it could be the usual kind. But still. Right. But still, even if that were the case. To do the whole thing, and actually, it was suggested that we put in for two million dollars. We just wouldn't even be able to do that on a really, you know, periodic reimbursement. That's why we still didn't submit it. So the six hundred and fifty thousand would get us what?
Move the reading room. Move reading rooms.
So we get you like air.
Air conditioning, ventilation and heat.
Okay.
I need that for you. The BRI grant.
Yeah.
So, now when are you supposed to know? I'm sorry. I don't know. Once they don't have a.
I didn't see it.
Well, that's a new business, so I was just doing.
That's your all business.
Not, um, community sessions will be held in eight, for the DRI, community sessions to be held in April or May. Local planning committee process is going to be in June.
Okay, and I wrote that in the presentation. The way it works is that the local planning commission will recommend projects to the state for funding and then the state will make the final decision among those.
And then we'll be doling out the various state agencies to administer them. And so that's where that question about reimbursement.
So if, if we got assigned ASME, then we would probably be reimbursed on a regular basis versus someplace else. But nobody seems to know whether that we would be.
And, and the beauty too is that they don't, if the DRI doesn't fund this. The idea or the processes that a project will be reviewed for and other funding sources will be sought out. Not by us, but by them, you know, the people we're doing this by the state. So, yeah, so, you know, they try to put that out. Yeah, I'm just very curious, a couple of things. One, um, the act, I think I understand maybe what we've requested because I know we proved this with kind of slight uncertainty. Is this somewhere that we can, like in the drop box, so we have some idea of what the application actually was?
I see the, I see the call.
Okay. Call heads. And you said Virginia in a program, how, the question program?
That, I, she's talked about it times that she's presented to us, it's a program.
Yeah, I, well, I know the question program, but how does that fit in with this?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
It was part of telling how wonderful we are.
Okay.
Kind of background and also, you know, they, particularly the BRI wants to see economic benefits.
Okay.
You know, that's a program that was related to employment and.
I, I'm just very curious, the program, like, wait, definitely this program. You go, the definition of the word program?
Right, yes.
And if anyone else is looking for, I put some of those comments from the DRI workshop in the president's report too, you know, some of the observations that were made for this. Just in case, any, any other questions?
Okay, so the next one, one of the problems is not necessarily getting an answer as to whether we got that before going on to all the others that are in line. So the next one is the ARCA and we anticipate applying with the board approvals under ARCA. To, for more funds for the air quality system. So like, were you doing the first floor?
Could be the first floor, could be the back half of the building, so certainly open for recommendations if there are priorities. Again. I, I don't have, first of all, circumstances of recommendation, but.
But we rely on you for the more technical access. So if you have a recommendation. Not if it's time, I don't want.
I mean, it'd be easy to do the back half, the library, just like we did the front half, like on the second floor, in terms of the language we put together and the approach. On over many few people there. So if there's a desire to say, oh, we really want to do the basic pieces or, basically the wrong word, ground floor and the first four pieces. That might then need some space planning changes as well, so that it's a little more involved. The beauty of the second floor is that we can do that without doing any space plan changes. We maintain the volumes in large part. So we want to air condition the ground floor. Okay, that sounds good. We could air condition that floor. A lot of those pieces might get taken out then as we do a larger renovation. Or we say, oh, we want to do the boiler, which we will use in any case. That might be an approach, but some of the existing infrastructure we had is not compatible with a new boiler. That we, for now, I think we have a little press steam system. And we go to the. Water-based system, again, times the US model. But then we've also heard that all the piping that's in place is also a hundred and twenty years old. Piping is approaching end of life. So we could look at a project that would focus on replacing piping now in anticipation of. Maintaining the existing equipment we have and then reuse it for the future. Heating portions. I'm actually going to part of the control, you know, we have existing units. And they want to add remote air conditioning to these units. So now we've got two pipes, I'm going to add another two pipes for using two existing pipes, we're adding two more pipes. So. We could do a similar approach here. We take the existing pipe and we replace the existing pipes. And then in the future, we add air conditioning, we could then add two more pipes in addition to this. So.
With, with the ARCA. With, there's clearly more money involved in that, forty two million.
Well, because they already allocated.
Yeah, they have, but so that's not going to actually work out as I understand.
Yeah.
Some of them are, you know, not going to happen.
No.
What? Why not, um, with the ARCA, with the whole dam, the whole HVAC system, the whole, total system for the building?
Well, I don't know. How they, do they give us all and then they have fun? And that was the constraint was having the.
It says with the, with the ARCA too, you've got the money upfront.
Yes.
We don't have to worry about, you know, two million.
Also in here, we don't have the capacity, the mayor said we don't have the capacity for reimburseables. You know, they're just, here you go. They don't, they want large projects because they don't have the capacity in the city. This is, it's going to be the city operating, you know, these brands.
They want, don't want to manage it, they just want to say.
They can't manage while the little ones, they want big money.
Numbers of projects, but bigger.
They want bigger projects.
So that, so they, it doesn't make sense to say, okay, we're going to get rid of the steam boiler and we're going to do that conversion with the steam to hot water. In preparation for the geothermal and that, that could work.
When, I mean, to cover the whole wall of wax, I mean, completely air conditioning of the building and ventilation, you know.
When the mayor was pressed at one of these workshops about how much money was really available. In writing down my notes, but it was like five, six mil maybe. That hasn't been spoken for, that, you know, the sponsor, the sponsor they had looked at, but they, and we fall under some of the categories, certainly education, tourism and one other thing. So, you know, we would be eligible certainly for some of these and we can make a great case. We check a lot of boxes. But the amount of money that has not already, in a sense, been spoken for, out of this, this is a second, the second amount of that forty-two. Some of the money, like the. Taylor, Taylor apartments are coming down. That's what happened maybe next week. So some of that money's gone. The first half's pretty much gone. Second half, you know, some of it's already been allocated, but projects might not end up getting the money they originally wanted. But, um, you know, he was like five.
Two million might be fine.
It does, you know, they can always say, well, when we give you X, they didn't say that they, they wouldn't give us partial, right? And it's just the preliminary, again, kind of like Upper Hudson, you know, we tell them what we'd like, they come back and say, yeah, but how about this?
Right.
So hopefully they have enough capacity to do that.
So we could go for the whole ball of wax and then they say, well, we don't have that. Okay, we'll be part of that whole.
Yeah, right.
We hope, we hope. Yeah, just wait, um, and I'm sorry, this is the other thing that do get confused. Oh, yeah, the reimbursals. Sorry, this is a backward question. Did the city say they might be able to float us a little bit? They haven't said one way or the other. Okay, there, there's no longer, okay, I'm sorry.
We're still discussional, so they, they're open. They haven't said no.
I would guess, and I, I did talk to the controller about bonding and bonding has to go through city council. I would guess that would have to go through city council too.
I don't, I, I don't know.
Well, that's my guess. What they said so far.
Do you have any idea when this proposed, um, geothermal project is going to happen? They really talked about it.
So I understand there are three phases. Phase one is scheduled for the summer. And that's on River Street. Pretty close to Monument Square. Phase two is supposed to go Taylor Apartments and the reversal stage. Phase three is going to come back this way and people in phase three.
That's what I, I heard.
But in terms of when phases two and three actually get done, I don't know answer to that. Phase, I, I think it's one somewhere at a time, but I think that's we specify.
Or is, you think, it would, the second or third phase might not have to go two years now, two years.
The classic tri-clad process. Make sure the streets are ripped up every summer.
Well, I have to be careful of the skill that they do. Everyone, you don't know where they live enough.
It fits right in. They want dirt roads.
Yeah, there you go. Is Dylan, is it Dylan that makes the, makes the plan, right? Um, Dylan in economics, Dylan. Right, he was saying that they eventually wanted to do it downtown. And it's, um, geothermal. So any, any questions? So, um, I move that the board approve. Making an application to the ARCA funds that due May sixth. And, you know, we have already done a lot of work up through the other project, so hopefully it'll be easier this time.
So again, um, the actual. What we're asking for is still under advisement, but. That will be the HVAC system?
Yeah, I think that's, yes.
Okay.
And I, I'll second that.
I, I, I think the HVAC is the priority. I also think that, you know, a lot of buildings become quite comfortable when they have their second floor air conditioned. I've seen that, right, because. Heat rises to the top. So I, I have seen projects where they just put the air conditioning, on air conditioning in the second floor and nothing on the first. So that might make it a whole lot more comfortable all over if that's what Kristen decides is the approach we should take. And I defer to him on that because I don't know anything. But is that who the boiler, do you, you want to include the boiler on piping and all that stuff as well?
What, what I'd like to say is we just need as HVAC for this building and we can get into specifics of how that, like the top of the engineers on a little bit and get their feedback.
To me, true.
Yeah.
Okay. And, you know, these projects aren't for maintenance. So if we already had an HVAC system. We wouldn't be, right, being what we see, because that, that came up in some discussions I had, you know, but we've never had air condition, had air conditioning and ventilation. So we may have to adjust. What we gather, ask for.
To the question of whether we have heat sometimes.
And the heat system has components that are a hundred and twenty years old. So I think we can make a basic argument for it.
It's not efficient, it's somewhat random throughout the development. A modern system for heating either.
But. It's not our decision. Of, you know, the grantee's decision. So I, I can't see for what they. Things.
So again, motion is to, for the board to approve in our application for the main library's HVAC system. Specifics to be, to be decided, determined.
And, yeah. The preparation of a, of an application. When I say, someone said approve the application, so I.
Preparation and submission.
Preparation and submission, thank you.
I think you should stop that HVAC system.
For me, HVAC, oh, well, you see, I would have harder time going through something that.
That what?
I don't know. I brought it as a specific. Okay, so we will take out, should we take out specifics?
You want to pin this down?
To share the application.
Right.
Sure, writing it and talking to people.
Okay, I'll just, I'll take that out. I listen sometimes.
Very well. I second the motion.
Um, all in favor? Okay. Either me. All right. Any other, do you all, is anyone else have any other, oh, new business?
Yes.
Um. I did send out a, a note and just wanted to reiterate that the near, like about the New York State Library funding. So, uh, the systems. Funding went, uh, five point five million increase. So it's at ninety-nine point six. It's written down there just so you don't have to take notes. Um. The statewide construction fund went back to thirty-four million. Um, Upper Hudson therefore will probably get about one point nine million to share.
Although the governor did recommend fourteen million, so it actually.
I know, but you know, I'm sorry.
We asked for forty-five million.
We asked, the ask was for forty-five. The implication at the advocacy day workshops was that the. Actual number would be closer to the forty-five than the thirty-four, that they realized the thirty-four was just a little.
That's because we were talking to our, our representatives who are all supportive.
They are supportive, but they came from their. Coaches.
Yeah, yeah.
They came from conferences. It wasn't just that I'm going to do this. They said the caucus is the one they might be for. And two of our, our legislators said the same thing. They agreed. So I know everyone says it's good news and I'm going, yeah, sorry, it's so, so, it's right down to three, it's so, so news. Yeah. You know, we're still at that thirty-four, where prices are going up, need is going up, everything else is going up. And the forty-five million ask wasn't anywhere near what was really needed. So. I, I'm glad you said that because I didn't want to say it out loud. So anyways, and I think that must be it for new old business, at least for now. Anyone who stayed with us this long that has, oh, no, community feedback, any community feedback? Yes.
Quick, I have two people complain that are very sweet. Here is not low enough lighted. They'd like to see better lighting, that it's scary to walk through there or down the side of the building. Now, if you don't believe it.
It's a little good.
And I guess it's not sufficient. And also the feeling wants that it were better lit, that there wouldn't be so much littering.
I wonder if that street light is out. There's supposed to be a street light in the back that shines down that.
I don't, I don't know.
I don't know. You can, you can check on our way up scene. We'll check it out.
Because it's too scary for me now.
Um, anybody? Any more public, anyone want to make some public comment?
I would.
Okay.
Uh, this is Virginia. I'm the head of circulation. Before I do first, I'd like to say Joy left a message for Paul that she had to leave the meeting. Please close the laptop when you're done.
That calls laptop, Joy.
Oh.
But, um, if you'll bear with me, I was kind of taking notes along the meeting. First, yes, the ferry street door is very scary anytime during dark. So I would advocate for lighting and again, renew my request for external cameras. But I'd like to say overall that I'm very encouraged by the board discussions today. I wasn't really sure, especially in response to the surveys, what the discussions would lead for. So I would like to say for myself, I was very encouraged by those. I really feel like the board is understanding that we're in a dire situation, both financially and with supporting staff. Understanding that, yes, you do have the responsibility to be good stewards of the monies for the best interest of the library. However, securing knowledgeable, qualified staff that you can retain is a main core of that. I don't think that's misunderstood. I'm just reiterating. So I think that you understand that you have to be bold in order to make the changes. Whatever you decide to do, you have to make the decision and be loud about it. Just because we've always been this way doesn't mean it's acceptable or okay anymore. We've historically always been underfunded and understaffed and our staff have always risen to the challenge of doing the best we can and making sure that there's no direct impact to the public with those limited resources. However, it is not okay and it can no longer be sustained. So I would encourage you to continue those bold conversations, that getting out in the public. How can you build that community knowledge, making sure the narrative is there, build that support? If you are going to do that, the staff can support you. But whatever decisions are being made, please just continue those bold conversations. Salaries are always going to be behind, even if we ask for another million dollars, we're not going to stay in line with everybody else. So we just have to keep up with ourselves to remain competitive and keep the benefits in line with those. Also, sometimes cheaper benefits like health insurance doesn't equal better. So I would caution about looking into group opportunities to purchase those things that might necessarily reduce what staff have as far as quality, just because it's cheaper. All right, so that's one thing. So I really enjoyed the conversations about how the board could address communication with the staff. I agree that this has to be a filter down that includes Paul and the board. But Carolyn hit it on the nose. The difference between Evelyn being here and being a presence is us knowing her personally and not always necessarily as a board president or board member in those roles in every interaction. Being intentional and formal, allowing staff direct access, not necessarily to specific questions regarding things Paul should be the filter for, but about the grants and the specifics about those, or even if you just set some guidelines on what you can do to kind of keep the staff up to par with those communications. One thing Marie touched on kind of a little bit and she said, you know, we are doing these things, why don't the staff know? And I think that's not necessarily that the staff don't know, but that we're using the terminology in different ways. Such as you guys just couldn't figure out when the meeting was because you thought it was at different times. It's that kind of understanding where it's like, okay, we're going to meet at the meeting, but nobody knows what the meeting is. So it's that kind of disconnect that I really think is filtering down. I appreciate that the board members took time to address us specifically about the survey directly, you know, correcting the intent and addressing that it was insulting and we appreciate that as well. The survey was, is a really great tool that I think if used and cultivated better, could be very valuable going forward, including an exit survey. If possible, pull in some staff to help you with those things because the insight that you're going to want is from staff. So the best way to know is who already has that information. We can help you build that up. And then just being intentional and deliberate with communication. So any, yes, we have board meeting minutes and you have these recordings that we can review after. Paul can give a digest to one or two people. But that's not necessarily addressing the staff as a whole. So even just a summary of what's going on, if you don't want to do the full meeting. Again, these are all just suggestions to build on your conversation about how to address communication issues. But I think you will find that if you ask any staff person, they're willing to have those conversations independently. But you have to be intentional with them and deliberate. And Evelyn is a great presence. We all enjoy her personally. And you don't want to always cloud that or providing her service. We do help her with tasks that she needs or picking up materials. We don't want to cloud that interaction and our service with maybe trying to understand a grant that the board is working on all the time. And you don't really have the time each interaction to do that across the desk. I know that's a lot. Thank you for letting me say it all. As always, I do appreciate the conversations.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment?
I would just like to say what she said. I, I can't, she covered it all. So, and I do appreciate, I do appreciate your attention and your your willingness to listen to us and where we're coming from. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to say thank you to you both as well. This has been a long meeting. You guys have been very patient in letting us go through lots of detailed conversations. I really appreciate your time and patience to stick around for the end of the meeting and to offer your comments back to us. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? There, hello? Never mind. At least I heard it. So, okay, so dated time of next meeting is May 10th, 5 o'clock for finance. 5:30 for regular board meeting now. Usually in summer, I just want to mention two quick things. Usually in summer, we do try to go to Leventeberg to do a meeting there. Yes, it's because the snowmen is open in summer. I as well understand that, but I think we may not want to specify now which month. As long as no one object, you know, everyone's okay with Leventeberg until we know they're open and, you know, back to some regulars. They're open to the library.
Oh.
You see, the communication, I love, the snowmen love it. But yes, and we know that the Berg branch is, is back to like some sort of normalcy. And I just want to mention, it's funny that this came up today because on next month's agenda, which I've already started working on, we're going to talk about the September, I'll call it the September election, or I should say our board election. Because we'll set that up, set the timing up because it's better to have it come sooner than later and only win in rooms and all that other stuff. And how many board positions will be?
Two right now.
Two, yes, Marie and Kristen's positions are open, or whatever. So that will be, and I will warn everybody now that it won't be the last Tuesday of the month because that is Russia Shama.
What will be the last Tuesday?
We can have the election. Yeah, because this will be an easier time to figure out if we're going to stick to, as long as we're sticking to September and Tuesday. It can't be that long. That would be very inappropriate. Anyway, so, anything else? I don't think there's anything else. I will make a motion to adjourn. Do we have, yes, we do. Do all in a row? All right, you're good. Well, I'll come back this morning to sign this, okay? Can we start seeing me again? All right. Everybody, thank you so much for putting up a very, 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 very. Productive, productive, constructive. Excited, that'll be great. Yeah. Right, right.
Hey, somebody remind Paul to close the laptop.
You got it. Do we have to turn it off or nothing? Just close it?
George said close it.
Just close it. Goodbye, Mr. Forget.
Thank you.